They said forty-one on the TV like a hundred times today.
They said what?
Forty-one on the TV like a hundred times.
I don't watch TV during the day.
Must have not been, I wasn't watching TV, must have been on the radio.
Good evening and welcome to the workshop meeting of the Town Council of Monday, December 3rd. Let's begin the meeting, please, with a moment of silence in remembrance of the forty-first President of the United States, George Bush. Thank you. Councilor Breton, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the Town Clerk please take attendance?
Councilor Breton?
Here.
Councilor Forrest?
Here.
Councilor Hurley?
Here.
Councilor Latina?
Here.
Councilor Lesser?
Here.
Councilor Ral?
Here.
Councilor Spanella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martino?
Here.
And Mayor Moore and Lello?
Here, thank you. First, we have a presentation tonight by our Police Chief to discuss public safety in town, so we'd ask Chief Sutran to come on up. After the Police Chief speaks, we'll have a few words from our Legislative Delegation. I see Representative Moore and Guerra in the audience.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. There's crime. There's crime in Weathersfield, there's crime in every place else in the state of Connecticut too, which in particular is the juvenile crime that seems to have exponentially gone up quite a bit, especially in the last couple of years. The state of Connecticut has closed correctional facilities for juveniles, so a lot of them aren't really getting processed through the system, and they're actually on the streets. And they continue to stay on the streets. We've actually arrested some of the kids with ankle bracelets on, indicating that they're on probation or parole. The kids know this too, and they, I think that's one of the reasons why they're acting out so much. They don't seem to have any fear, they don't seem to have, definitely don't have any good judgments, and some of the crimes that they've committed seem to be now escalating. What we had is a huge rash of car breaks, and they were going around at night onto people's property, going through the driveways, looking for cars that were unlocked, and they'd rifle through the cars. If people kept valuables in their cars, they would steal them. If they left their keys in the car, they would steal the car itself. I do have some statistics here that kind of indicates what's going on. In 2017, car breaks in Weathersfield, we had three-hundred-and-eighty-one. Newington had two-hundred-and-three. Rocky Hill had a hundred-and-sixty-six. Berlin, a hundred-and-thirty-four. West Hartford, a hun- seven-hundred-and-seventy-six. Glastonbury, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine. Bloomfield, two-hundred-and-twelve. The car thefts themselves, Weathersfield, this is 2017, we had ninety-one car thefts. Newington had ninety. Rocky Hill had thirty-one. Berlin had twenty-five. West Hartford had a hundred-and-forty-nine. West Hartford seems to be a popular target for some of these kids. Glastonbury had fifty, and Bloomfield had fifty-three. Now, 2018, we are in the last month of 2018, but we haven't gotten a full twelve months out of it yet, we've gone way down on the car breaks. A hundred-and-ninety-four versus last year, three-hundred-and-eighty-one. Newington, though, has two-hundred-and-seven. Rocky Hill, a hundred-and-thirty-eight. Berlin, eighty-nine. West Hartford went down quite a bit too, but still had five-hundred-and-sixty-one car breaks this year. Glastonbury, a hundred-and-sixty-seven. Bloomfield, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine. Car thefts in Weathersfield this year, seventy. Newington, sixty-eight. Rocky Hill, fifty-eight. Berlin, twenty-three. West Hartford, a hundred-and-sixty-one. Glastonbury, fifty-five. And Bloomfield, fifty-six. But the one statistic that I think is very telling is what's happening with the kids when they steal the cars. We've actually cornered some of them on our streets, but they drive like maniacs. In 2014, we had four pursuits for the entire year. In 2015, we had six. 2016, we had twenty-two. In 2017, we were up to forty-two pursuits. In 2018, we're well over fifty now, and we're not finished with the year yet. Now, you have to understand what the definition of a pursuit is, because it's not like it used to be when I was in patrol, when we had horses and carriages.[432.72][432.72](Laughter). The pursuits were a lot better those, in those days. But what we had, what we have here, as soon as an officer puts on his lights and tries to stop a car, if that car maintains speed or increases speed, that falls under the definition of a pursuit. So it's classified as a pursuit. However, what's, what's happened is that the people who are in these cars drive crazy. I mean absolutely crazy. A little, we had one car that was actually clocked on Ridge Road doing a hundred-and-two miles an hour, and he was not stopping for the stop signs up there. So they, they'll stop the pursuit. The sergeant sees they stopped the pursuit, or the officer himself will stop the pursuit. So what we have here is, now you've got a car heading towards Hartford at an extreme rate of speed, and there's no cruiser behind it, but they don't slow down. And then, a lot of times, not a lot of times, but many times, those cars then get involved in accidents in Hartford. Hartford has a serious problem, to say the least, because of these things, and the fact that most of the stolen cars that I was referring to from all these other suburban towns end up in Hartford. That's where the cars are being recovered. The crimes do seem to be escalating. We all have heard about the boy, the thirteen-year-old at the bus stop. That's an escalation. Two cars were stolen out of a driveway in West Hartford with the keys in the car. They were running, warming up. The two cars then came into Weathersfield forty minutes later, and were cruising our streets, and they saw that thirteen-year-old boy at the bus stop alone. Decided, one of the kids got out of the car, went up to the boy, there were seven kids in those two cars. One of, one of the boys got out of the car, walked up to the thirteen-year-old, and told him to give him his phone. The boy said, "No," and he proceeded to knock him down and punch and kick him until he got his phone and he got his backpack. We later recovered that car, actually Hartford recovered that car on Weathersfield Avenue. The backpack was still in the car with the Chromebook, still in it. They never even took the Chromebook. So obviously, they didn't care about the Chromebook, but they did care about that phone. We had a robbery, an armed robbery last year, kind of significant, because what happened was, the guy and his wife pull into a parking lot in one of the apartment complexes. They get out of their car. Car pulls up behind them, blocks their car in. Kid jumps out with a gun in his hand, goes up and tells the husband, "Give me your phone." He does. He then goes to the woman, who was six or seven months pregnant, says, "Give me your phone," and she says, "No," with a gun in his hand. He pushed her, he grabbed her breast, grabbed her phone, and jumped back into the car. Two days later, that boy was involved in a shooting in New Britain, where he got shot in the leg by a police officer. That police officer was out of work for quite a while, while the investigation was going on. But these are the kind of activities occurring. Last night, I told the manager last night, that we had a similar situation on Fairway Drive. Man goes, lives on, in the apartments on Fairway Drive, drives to the Wilkethill Deli to get a pack of cigarettes. Says he notices a black Mercedes flying up Wilkethill Road, but soon as it went past the deli, it slowed down and came to a stop and pulled into the parking lot. So he was watching it, he was wondering what was going on. Kid gets out of the car, looks at him, he really doesn't think that much of it, gets in his car, and then drives back to Fairway Drive. When he pulls into the parking lot, parks his car, he looks up and he sees that same black Mercedes coming down, you know, the driveway. So he now knows there's something wrong. So he runs, smart thing to do, and he tries to, he gets into the foyer of the apartment, but he can't get the key to unlock his door, because he was nervous. Kid comes up behind him, he's got a ski mask on, handgun in his right hand, and tells him to give him his keys. He says, "No." Second, two, two more kids now come in, both wearing ski masks, both have guns in their hands, and they proceeded to beat the guy and grab his keys and take them. He is extremely lucky that they didn't shoot and kill him. Because later that night, maybe three or four hours later, there was a car crash on Farmington Avenue in Hartford near Etna. No reason, they must have been driving crazy, drove off the road, and crashed into something on the side. Hartford cop is driving up, he sees now four guys get out of that car and run towards Etna, actually into the parking garage there. Just by luck, there were two state troopers, Capitol Police Officer, and he called for help from other Hartford officers, so they surrounded the place. They found the four kids in the garage, and they, after short struggles, they actually made the apprehension. They recovered the ski mask out of the car, they recovered three handguns in the parking garage. One of the kids had two magazines for nine-millimeter and a bunch of loose thirty-eight caliber rounds. All three of the guns were loaded, one was a thirty-eight, two were nine-millimeter. So they had enough ammunition to wage a small war if they wanted to. One of those kids, we believe, is the one that actually did the robbery of the thirteen-year-old at the bus stop. It's going to be a hard case to make, because we don't have forensics, we don't have eyewitnesses, and, you know, there's no fingerprints or DNA or anything that we can use from that type of a crime. The boy will be shown, you know, photographic lineups, but we don't have much confidence in that. But, it's, it's pretty, we're pretty sure that this is a kid, based on the description and, and what the kids have said, which isn't a lot. But there, just to make a kind of carte blanche statements, is that, yes, crime is up. Crime does go up and down, it really does. But it seems to be worse now because of the juvenile justice system, the way it's set up now, there's not a lot of deterrence to some of these kids, at least in their minds, to committing these crimes. Anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer any, or if there's anything else you'd like me to talk about.
Do councilors have questions for the Police Chief?
I want to go with the delegation first, that's my.
Okay.
Oh, I have a question.
Okay.
Are you doing anything differently now that that happened to the thirteen-year-old?
Yes, we have. Well, we've done a lot of things differently from the very beginning. Because of the fact that what was occurring, most of our directed patrols, which used to be on the South East Highway in the Berlin-Turpik on the overnight shift because of the burglaries and the convenience stores that are open that we'd have robberies at and so on and so forth, were redirected into the neighborhoods because of the cars that were being broken into. And we only have so many resources, so that's where they were redirected. And that's one of the reasons why we, I believe, that's why we cut back on a significant number of those car breaks, because our presence in the neighborhoods were being seen. We actually, well, I can give you a perfect example. One of our officers was driving up Wells Road, one, one-thirty in the morning, and what they're looking for is the, the taillights. And he spots taillights up Knight Street. You know, no, Knight Street, Knight Street goes to, and then it's L, and there's a cul-de-sac on the other, I don't remember the name of that street, but what he did was, he drove up there. When he gets there, he now turns left and sees that cul-de-sac, there's two cars with no lights on, but running around that area. When he goes to stop them, he says, he fears he's got a pretty good shot at this, because they got to come out of that cul-de-sac and come back down that road. So he pulls the cruiser up and blocks it. Well, that meant nothing, because they drove over across the lawns. God knows what, if there was anything on those lawns, including people or dogs or cats or anything, they would have been killed. But they drove, they, what ends up happening now is, they come back out, they go back to Wells Road, and they head west. The officer comes out, he's heading west at Ridge, Wells and Ridge, one keeps going straight, one takes a right and, and takes Ridge Road. The officer goes after the car that takes the right. Now, they're going pretty fast. When he gets to the Hartford line, he's already lost sight of them, and he breaks off the pursuit, but proceeds into Hartford to see if maybe the car was across, you know, not too far over the line. He doesn't find it. He comes back, he's headed back now south on Maple Ave. When he gets to that section where there's a median, right at the line, right across from Cedar Crest Cemetery, he sees a car headed north at a high rate of speed, you can tell by the, the jiggling of the headlights. That car now shifts over into the southbound lanes, headed northbound directly at him, head-on. He had to drive into the cemetery to avoid being struck by that car. That was the car that kept going west on Wells Road. I, I can't, I know I'm not probably explaining it well enough, but you have to understand, there's not much judgment in these individuals. They, they don't fear, they're not afraid of crashing or dying, because I don't think they understand what the concept is. They drive like maniacs. None of these kids have driver's licenses. I remember, I heard somebody say, "Why don't they take their licenses away from them?" They don't have licenses. Some of the statements that they've made is kind of scary, you know? "It's not my car, what do I care?" Or things like, "We know, soon as we drive crazy, you'll back off." But, it's the way it is. I don't know how, I can't really sugarcoat it. It's, it's, we, we have a problem, and it's statewide, it's not just Weathersfield, it's all across the state. I, I'm the President of the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association, so I go to a lot of the meetings across the state. Every chief is saying the same thing. Every neighborhood is, is being hit with these kids that are doing this. I hope I answered your question.
You did, thank you.
Before we take more questions, why don't we have the, the delegation get up, speak? Would you mind coming up now and giving a few words, and then we'll... Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Senator Doyle, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Representative Guerre for a short period of time. I know my colleague here, Carrie Wood, who's the new elected twenty-ninth, will soon be taking over in January. But, to the chief's point here, we, we're here, obviously, I'll let Representative Moore and Senator Doyle speak on this issue, but as a, as a representative that represents Newington, Weathersfield, and Rocky Hill, and I do do a lot of work in the city of Hartford too, this is an epidemic that is going on right now. And unfortunately, what's happening, from what my understanding is, a lot of these youngsters are under sixteen, fifteen years old. And a lot of gangs recruit these individuals too, because what they do is, they know that if they get in trouble, that they're not going to face any, basically, jail time. They're going to be right back out on the streets again. And that's why, that's why I'm seeing a rise, when I talk to police officers in Hartford, whatever it is, Rocky Hill or Newington, it's all over. The chief's absolutely right. It's throughout the whole state of Connecticut right now. So, you know, we're very lucky that, you know, you have a great police department, a good chief, and so does Rocky Hill and Newington. But it's something I think that we're gonna, the future, obviously, legislators may have to look at this, how we can tighten this loophole up. And, you know, when you talk to prosecutors about this too, it's that, they're flooded too. They're flooded. And so what do you do with a fourteen-year-old or a fifteen-year-old? Do you, you know, do you put them in jail? Do you, you know, do you try to give them another chance? And that's obviously that they do. But unfortunately, they go home to sometimes broken homes, nobody there, and, you know, they get recruited as a gang member or whatever it is, and they go right back and do it again. And it's an unfortunate thing.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor, and Town Councilors. Good to see all of you, members of the public. Russ Moore, and I'm the State Representative for Weathersfield, the Twenty-eighth District, and Chief. First of all, I think you know this, and you have at least one officer in the crowd, we certainly value and appreciate all the work that the Weathersfield Police Department does, the men and women, Weathersfield PDR tops, for sure, in the region and probably in the state. So, and I know you have a lot of challenges. The, the morning after the young, young man was accosted on Yale Street, I was stopping into a convenience store, and one of your officers, somebody was there with their car running in front of the store. And the doors were unlocked, and your officer went in and, you know, talked to the person, and like a public service announcement, I, I was like, this is, you know, kind of sad with all the press that's going on, but goes to show, and he was very polite in just reminding this person in town that it's dangerous. I'm, you know, when I heard the story about the young boy, thirteen years old, I believe, you know, it sickens, sickens me. My kids are older now and, and grown up, but I have grandchildren that live in this town, and everybody else's kids are equally as important. And it's, I guess, I, I'm not sure even that there's anything that can be said, except I need to hear more from, from you, Chief. When, when you talked about the young man that was in the black Mercedes, and you believe he's the one that went after the, our thirteen-year-old boy, did you guys get an age on this guy? Do you, old, he's sixteen? So, I've already talked, Senator Fonfer and I have discussed this matter, because it's troubling, obviously. I, I know some parents are here, and I'm, I'm actually glad to see some parents here. Sorry that you're here, but it's important. And I talked to Senator Fonfer, I've also spoken with Majority Leader Ritter, to talk about any possibilities of things we, we could do if there's things at the state level. Frankly, you know, if you listen to some people, no matter what you do for laws, it won't stop certain behaviors, but I think it's, Weathersfield has the charm of being, you know, a beautiful community to raise your families, and I think people are afraid. And that's not a good feeling. And I'm, I'm looking forward, I would welcome working with the Council and with, with you, Chief, to, to get the statistics and to try to work, if there's legislation that can be passed, to, to help. Obviously, the Police Chiefs Association is very active at the State Capitol. I imagine, I don't sit on the Judiciary Committee, but I'm sure it's something that will get some, some discussion this year. And it's, it's a bit disheartening, and I know you all are doing everything you can. The, I think the concern is, and I hear it from people, is, you know, we would like more, more feet on the ground and more things. And I remember one time, many years ago, when I had the pleasure of sitting at that dais, listening to you were here and, and talking about, you know, how you could have an officer on almost every corner and things could still happen, and that's a frustrating problem. I know for you, and the men and women of the Police Department and the, and the residents, so I'm, I'm committed to working with all of you to, to try to do what we can from our level. It's kind of sad that two of my colleagues won't be here, but Carrie Wood out there, I know she's going to be ready to step right in and, and work with us as well. And I encourage you to reach out to her and, and make sure you get to know her. And I look forward to listening, especially to the Senators. They both have different perspectives and probably very good perspectives on what we can do and, and can't do. And I just promise that we'll continue to work with all of you to try to do, to do what's best for the people of Weathersfield.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Like Representative Guerre, my career is winding down, but I'm currently Chairman of the Judiciary Committee. This is an issue I've been talking to Chief about for years. And I'm a little, I was outnumbered, a minority, but I think this is, I kind of foresaw this several years ago. I think the genesis of the whole problem is this Raise the Age movement that the Chief said. Prior to the first legislation passed, maybe three or four years ago, the age of juvenile was under sixteen. So basically, when you're under, when you're juvenile, the court system treats you differently. And, I mean, I'll, I'll be honest, it's, it's appropriate in certain, certain circumstances. But a few years ago, we raised the age to under eighteen. So now sixteen and seventeen-year-olds are part of the juvenile court system. So there's a lot, there's a lot of belief out there. The, the recent rise in crime is related to the lack of enforcement, and it's not going to the regular Superior Court. So, that's, a lot of us believe in. I mean, I'll be honest, I had not supported the Raise the Age, you know, four years ago. I opposed it for this reason. But it's a strong movement at the Capitol. It got through, it passed on a bipartisan vote, so it's not even a partisan issue. As Chairman of the Committee, I opposed it. I think it's a wrong move. And then a few years ago, many of your, where I made a very controversial budget vote, for a lot of reasons, a lot of people didn't like it, my colleagues, my party. But in that, that was, a provision was inserted into that to raise the age to under twenty-one. So that would have brought nineteen and twenty-year-olds into this, to make them treated in the juvenile court system. So I think that would make this problem worse, I firmly believe, because some have postulated it makes them more attractive for gangs, because you're not going to be prosecuted. People will disagree with me, that's my belief, and, because I believe the criminal court system still treats people, first-time offenders, even if you're sixteen or seventeen in the old system. If you're not a repeat offender, you're going to get a, you're, you're not going to be thrown in prison. It was, I mean, I practiced criminal law. But, it's my concern, four years ago, it's my concern in the new legislature, and we have a new rep there. I hope when this issue's going to come up, it will come up this year, to raise the age to under twenty-one. There was a strong, two years ago, it was in that budget that I, I voted against and supported the other one. That one was the motivations, it was slipped in there in the, at night, but none of my colleagues here had anything to do with it. The presenter really pushed it, and that's going to be back next year. So I would just think, the new legislature has to consider this, because again, this is not just a Weathersfield problem, it's a statewide problem, and I just hope the new legislature will analyze it and try to look at the actual criminal numbers and be able to maybe step back, certainly not raise the age anymore, and then reconsider, maybe come to try to reform the piece of legislation in the current legislature. Because it's a scary time, and I agree with the comments of the Chief, and we've been talking about it for several years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'll be the first to say, this is not my area of expertise, but it's clearly an important issue, not only to folks in town, but to, as Paul just said, this is an issue that is of concern around the state. The challenge is to find a balance, frankly, of recognizing what incarcerating or having someone have a record at a very young age does to their lives with ensuring public safety. Anytime you have a law, or not a law, where folks of any age feel that they can do something with impunity, you're going to see abuse of that. I deal with that on a regular basis in Hartford with respect to, to ATVs and street bikes. Hartford Police does not, I think Weathersfield may have a similar policy, they don't chase folks on ATVs and street bikes. And so these guys know it, they drive up to a cop, give him the finger, whatever, drive off, and, and because they know that there's a no-chase policy... And, and because they know that there's a no-chase policy. I don't know all the facts on how this change in the law, changing the age, is impacting communities, but I commit to you that I will learn what it is, what its effect is statewide. And to the extent that there needs to be some modification that sends the proper signal that we don't want to have young people have, having essentially a weight around them because they had an indiscretion. But that does not, and should not, mean that someone can act with impunity, whether it's in this case or any case, where there aren't consequences for their action. That balance has to be struck, and I don't know if we're there right now with the current law. But I will do my homework, and, and I will be glad, I'm sure, that Russ, Carrie, and others will be glad to come back as we get into the session and update you as to where we are. And, and see if there are some alternatives, some approaches, some modifications to the current law that, A, makes sense, and B, the chances of us achieving passage of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any councilors who have questions now for either the Police Chief or our delegation? Counselor Rel?
For the Chief. Chief, was the car that was used for the assault on the thirteen-year-old, was that a stolen car?
Yes. It was stolen out of West Hartford.
Out of, out of West Hartford. And I know, you know, I don't know who it is in the Police Department, but they're doing a pretty good job of the PSAs on social media. You know, I got to give credit where it's due. You guys do a pretty good job. You know, I try to read it as much as I possibly can, and it seems like a lot of the comments, people are saying, you know, oh, well, you know, it's your fault because you left your car running, or it's your fault because you ran into the dry cleaners real quick, you left your car running, or your key's in the car. Or, or if the car's not even running, it's just in your driveway and you feel secure. But looking at where some of these incidents are, are occurring, they're not on the Silstein Highway, they're not on Knott Street, Ridge Road, Jordan, they're just like this one on Yale and deeper in the communities.
Yes.
Are you seeing a decrease because of the PSAs that are going out there, because of the comments that people are making? Are you, you know?
I hope so. I mean, that's why we do it. We try to notify the citizens, we use the Facebook page and media itself. We've actually had a couple of interviews with the TV channels through the years, expressing that, please lock your cars, don't leave your keys in the cars, don't leave your fobs in the garage where they're close enough to the car where you can start it, because that's what they're looking for. If you actually watch, and some of the people actually have, you know, like the, the Ring or some of these cameras that have night vision, you can see the kids, what they're doing as they go up to the cars. They're checking the doors to see if they're unlocked. If they're unlocked, they're going to push the button to see if they can start the car. Or if the keys are in the ignition, they'll, they'll take it that way. One of the, I should have explained also, when Counselor Hurley asked me that question, after the boy was robbed at the bus stop, we did flood the streets as much as possible in the morning, and I think a lot of the citizens saw that the officers were out there. Now, I had to bring him in on overtime, I had to take people that were inside and put them out there at that time. It's not something that we can maintain for a long period of time, but it was something that was important, especially after, two days later, Windsor had the exact same crime. So no one's immune from this, and it could happen again. And if it seems to be escalating, I wanted Weathersfield citizens to be as protected as possible, to be as safe as possible. Like I said, we can't cover every street, but we did cover a lot. When the officers were out there, they were actually directed, if they saw somebody warming up their car, not with a car starter, but warming up their car with the keys in the ignition, to, to stop and talk to them and advise them that, that could be a dangerous thing to do. I know, it's, what you call it is victim blaming. We're not trying to blame the victims, we're really not. We're just trying to get people, one, to lock their cars, and two, not leave the keys or their fobs in the cars or near the cars. But I think what's happened is because of those, the people are understanding that more. Although I did get a comment from a woman not too long ago, what was it? She said, two of her cars were taken out of her driveway, and she said, why aren't you telling anybody this? And I was like banging my head against my desk, because I, it's all we've been doing for the last two years, is telling people about this, is to lock your cars and don't leave your fobs and your keys in the car. But she didn't think that we had been notifying them enough. And I, I'm not trying to blame victims, but one of the, the officers were directed, if they saw that in a driveway, the car running, to go up to the homeowner and explain to them that that's, that's not a good thing to do, as politely as possible. Some people accepted the advice very nicely, some people, get off my property, that's my car, I can do what I want with it. I remember one guy, I stopped at the Corner Store Church in Silas on a regular basis to buy lottery tickets, and I saw a guy with his car running out there, and I said, you know your car's running out there? His response to me was, yeah, I know, I can see it. Well, you think that you're going to be able to stop it if somebody jumps in it and drives off? His response to me was, yes, I could stop it. So some people just aren't rational.
Chief, you bring up a good point. Location-wise, are we talking Rocky Hill border, Newington, Silstein, Knott Street, Jordan?
In regards to the car breaks?
Yeah.
No, they are all over. Rocky Hill's getting hit just as hard as we are.
No, but within, within confines of Weathersfield.
No, they're all over. They truly are. The last one we had last night was Haystack. Can't get more in the middle of Weathersfield than Haystack. And that one is, I mean, a very unique scenario there because of the fact that what they did was, there was two cars in the driveway, one in front of the other. The car in front was the boyfriend's car, the car in the back was the girlfriend's car. He comes out at 1:30 to go to work, gets into his girlfriend's car because he can't get his car out, so he thought, and drove off. His car wasn't even there. It was gone. We recovered the car, or I should say Hartford recovered the car later that day, and the keys were in it. They never left the keys in the car. What happened was, they got in, the car was unlocked, they got into the car to use the remote control in the garage, opened the garage, went into the house, got the keys off the kitchen table, took the keys, came back out, got into the car, closed the garage door, by the way. Got in the car and jockeyed it out, because we found the tire tracks on the grass. That must have taken them twenty, thirty minutes to do. Nobody heard a thing, nobody saw a thing.
What did they do with the car, though? I mean, if you go into a house, you got DVD players, you know, MacBooks.
That's just what I was talking about, the Chromebook. They didn't even take the Chromebook. That wasn't their target. I, I can't explain the mind of a fifteen, sixteen, or seventeen-year-old and why they do the things they do. It makes no sense to me. Why are they so interested in the phones? Most of the phones are locked. You know, I mean, most people have password codes. We can't break Apple password codes, even for police work. I, I don't understand it. It makes no sense to me. One of the things that never made any sense to me either was just what I was talking about. Why are there carjackings? Why are people willing to commit robbery, which is a far more serious crime than a car theft, when all you got to do is stand in front of a convenience store and you can have your choice of cars left and right? It makes no sense to me. But they do it. I don't know if it's for the thrill, or if it's just something to do because they don't have anything else to do. But we definitely have a serious problem. And what the Senator was saying, he's the one that saved us from that, raised the bill. Because that was a nine-hundred-page implementer bill that was one paragraph that had raised the age to twenty-one. Not only raised the age to twenty-one as a juvenile, but then a youthful offender would be raised to the age of twenty-five. Not on about most of the people here, and I think Eric can agree with me, that most of our crimes are being committed by the people between the ages of fifteen and twenty-five. That's our most vulnerable situation. And if you made those individuals juveniles or youthful offenders, we'd really be in a lot of trouble. There's a big difference between how you could have to deal with a juvenile than there is when you have to deal with an adult. Including their rights and what they say. They could give a complete confession to you, it means nothing in a court of law unless their parent or guardian is present. They can't waive their rights. An adult can. So, yes, I'm hoping that somebody comes to their senses and changes things around. We need, we definitely don't need to raise the age any higher. I'd like to lower the age. And even when you think about it, the state of Connecticut had a situation where sixteen and seventeen-year-olds were considered youthful offenders. That means if they got arrested for a nonviolent crime, they, they would go through, like juvenile court, they would go and be treated like a juvenile. So sixteen and seventeen-year-olds were pretty much being treated as juveniles unless they kept committing crimes, unless they were repeat offenders. Then they were treated like an adult, and they could end up going to jail. Nobody wants to put a sixteen and seventeen-year-old kid in jail, but it's not on the first, second, third, or even ninth offense, it's usually much higher than that when they finally did go to jail. Well, that changed four or five years ago. Now there are, they are juveniles. Sixteen and seventeen-year-olds are juveniles. Well, I know the governor has actually made statements to the fact that juvenile crime is down because there's less arrests. But juvenile crime isn't down, there are less arrests, but the crime itself isn't down.
Counselor Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for coming tonight and your presentation, for all that you and your officers do. I just want to explore a few areas quickly with you. One, you already touched on, I want to go a little deeper, and two, two different ones. The one you already touched on are the current patrols of the schools. So, as awful as the break-ins are, and we've been hearing a lot over, about them the last couple of years, even worse in my mind, and hearing more stuff, is what happened to the thirteen-year-old and parents and the safety of them sending their kids to the bus stops and all that, hearing a lot about that, and that's truly scary. So you had mentioned that you've increased patrols in the short term, but it would be hard to do that over a longer period of time. Can you talk a little bit more about your plans in the short term? And then one of my follow-up questions to that is the impact of potentially hiring more officers, particularly for, for those types of activities? So if you had a comment on that.
Yes. We need more officers, I'm, I'm not going to deny that. I could use more officers on each of the shifts. Each shift has its own unique problems and things that we need to deal with, including quality of life issues. Yes, I, I did, I do have a lot more patrols out there right now, but it is costing us, you know, out of overtime because of the fact that I've got the entire day shift coming in an hour early to go out there an hour earlier to cover the bus stops. We have forty bus stops. We have, and it ranges in time from, I think the first one is at 6:45 or something like that, and, I mean, so they're different times at different places, and I've got a lot of officers out there patrolling them. But there's no way you're going to maintain that. But I want to protect the kids now. So I, we'll do this, and we're going to continue doing it until it gets cost prohibitive.
Great. And you said most of these crimes are being committed by fifteen to twenty-five-year-olds.
Most of our crimes, yes.
Are the great majority of them from kids outside of Weathersfield?
Yes.
Okay. So, what, I want to get your opinion on how you feel the impact of neighborhood crime watches? Do you feel they're effective? I've heard from some people in town that they're interested in maybe starting that. Do you find them effective?
Absolutely.
You do?
We can kick all the help we can possibly get. The more eyes that are out there, the better off we are. It's always been that way. We've always looked for citizen participation. Organized crime watch groups are great, but it's not easy to maintain or to actually attain that. That's why you don't see a lot of crime watch groups. There, there's actually a formula that you have to follow to become an official crime watch group. Neighborhood crime watch is one of the groups that do that. You can look it up on, on the internet, just Google neighborhood watch, and they'll, they'll show, tell you what you need to do and how to do it. And usually what it is, is one of those aspects of that, to develop that group, is to have a, a meeting with a number of people that want to participate, and it has to be a certain number. They don't reach that number. It sounds, a lot of people get involved, want to get involved in the beginning, and then it kind of wanes. And if it's not directly affecting them, it kind of goes away. But believe me, I would, I'd take all the help that we can get.
And should they work directly with your officers and set that up?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, they could work with us, but it's something that they have to attain themselves to get that official neighborhood watch title.
Got it. The last thing I have, and this is for you and the delegation if they want to comment, is, can you comment on working together with all of the towns that surround us, both from police as well as legislative, and trying to combat these problems together? I mean, we share, obviously we're concerned about what happens here in our town, but working together, because these, you know, the break-in was a West Hartford car, kids are coming from other towns. Can you comment a little bit on that?
I'll be glad. I'm, we do, we work with them all the time. In fact, Windsor detectives and our detectives were working on the, the bus stop robberies soon as Windsor's occurred. Hartford, we're in Hartford all the time, because that's where a lot of the information that we need to solve the crimes comes from. The cars are being recovered in Hartford. When a car that was involved in a crime in Weathersfield is recovered in Hartford, we bring it back to Weathersfield and we process the car. We solve a lot of crimes that way, through DNA and fingerprints. So, yeah, there's a lot of regionalization in regards to cooperation between the police departments, always has been, and always will be. It's the only way we can fight crime. Crime is not localized, it's regional. It comes and goes all over the place. I know, I have talked to the gentleman behind me, and they're very supportive, they've always been very good. In fact, I called up Russ one time and kind of yelled at him.
I was talking to the town manager for a minute.
Oh, no. No, it wasn't that bad. But I did push, and that was on the PSAP thing, but whatever, the, yes. So there is a lot of cooperation. I'm not worried about, don't forget, each police department has its own problems, and they have to address it their own way, but there is a lot of cooperation between the police departments. And we do get a lot of cooperation from the, the representatives and the senators, especially Senator Doyle. And I'll turn it over to you.
I'll just add.
Thank you, Chief.
I just think, for the, the next legislature to do anything on this issue, it's really doing, the town of Weathersfield's educated your delegation. The other towns have to do similar things to bring awareness to the, the state legislators across the state. But, I mean, this is not just a greater Hartford problem, it's a statewide problem, so all the towns are concerned about it. But just like you, you have to bring awareness to the delegation statewide, so legislators have awareness so next year and the session, they can all, you know, if they're all, if all the, all legislators are educated like you are, presenting the message to our delegation, you will get change at the Capitol.
You know, Councilman Lesser, you talked about what we can do too. The Chief being the head of the Police Chiefs Association, he will be talking to, obviously, everyone throughout the whole state of Connecticut. So therefore, there could be some language they want to propose that they can give to the next legislative body in regards that probably will have to go through the Judicial Committee and so forth. But that is one way of trying to combat this in regards to what their insight is on this, so therefore they can bring it to us and then move that ball forward.
Thank you.
Or, not me, but the next representative.
Thanks, Representative Lesser, that's a very good question, and, and that's what I tried to say a little bit at the beginning. I'd already spoken with Senator Fonfera, the Majority Leader, who's from Hartford, the Speaker's from Berlin, he and I have had these discussions, and that's paramount, that we talk to people throughout the state and, and try to get some, some discussions, because one of the problems at this point is, there's, it's not a problem, it's actually a good thing, but there's probably thirty new legislators out of one hundred and fifty-one coming in. Freshmen, committees haven't been established. Leadership of certain committees hasn't been established. And, and until that happens, it's, it's, you know, to, to get specific things done is going to be a little difficult. That being said, the discussions are already ongoing, and one thing about Weathersfield folks is you're very vocal, and we hear from you all the time, which you should. You should contact us and let us know what's going on. And it helps us to, to get that ball rolling. But like I said before, you have my commitment that I'll be working with, with Carrie and my colleagues in Newington and Cromwell and Rocky Hill to, to discuss these issues and try to come up with solutions. And obviously, we always work with the police to try to get their input, because oftentimes laws that we write, they have, they have a lot of input telling us what works, what doesn't work.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Just briefly, if I could say, Mayor, Chief, I'd, it'd be great if you could help us with the data in terms of the ages of those that you have either apprehended or have been involved.
have been involved in crime here in, in Weathersfield. It's one thing to react here in this forum to what happened to this young man, this young boy, which no parent ever wants to experience, no question about it. It's another thing to try to translate that into action at the legislature. We have to have the data, we have to have support that this policy, as well intended as it might be, if it's not working, and I appreciate what you said, Chief, about the youthful offender provision, that it no longer exists. That's exactly what I was trying to get at, that it's one thing to give opportunities like someone with youthful indiscretion, it's another thing to say three, four, five, ten times, you can do that with impunity, that should not stand. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Deputy Mayor?
Chiefs, this is for you and/or in combination with the superintendent. I know after that young man was accosted, something went out to the parents, telling them what they should do in the future, you know, kids as buddies, maybe one parent being there, whatever. For the benefit of the residents out there who don't have kids in the school system, can you tell us what you've recommended to parents so that everybody knows what you're trying to do to alleviate this from happening in the future?
I'm not sure what was put out.
Good evening, Mr. Emmett, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, my pleasure. Nice to be here with you. Yeah, we sent out a couple of communications since this happened last Monday, certainly we were disturbed by it, a despicable act to say the least. On Friday evening, I sent out a communication through our school messenger system to all of our community members in the school system. We talked about being vigilant and maintaining awareness. Several of the things we talked about were to make sure you had a plan, an escape plan, knowing where you would run to. If parents were going to work early, have a neighbor or a relative have eyes on students. We talked about not having earbuds on and not having noses down and phones, that is a major, major problem. We all do it, and it decreases the level of awareness of environment. We also talked about the process of going to bus stops in groups. Most of our stops, with the exception of kindergarten, our stops are cluster stops, so there are more than one student there, but in the case of our student last week, he was the only one there. And that could be a variety of different situations where he got there early and was the only one there, the other students were sick or got a ride to school. From a school district perspective, one of the things we did, we alerted all of our bus drivers through Autumn Transportation to be on the alert. If you see something, say something, so our bus drivers were told to radio into dispatch immediately if they saw anything suspicious. If any students got on a bus and reported anything, it was to be reported to dispatch so that the police could be contacted as well. We have our Director of Security, Hal Even, was instrumental in helping to get the document out on Friday. In addition to that, we have our residency officer, Michael Goddard, retired Weathersfield Police Officer, who works with us part-time after this incident occurred last Monday. Instead of his surveillance being focused in one area, he too monitored neighborhoods. He has a police radio, so he was able to radio in any suspicious activity. One of the things he spoke to was, he was struck by the number of cars he saw completely unattended warming up in driveways. So, to the point that Chief made, it's, it's happening. We're going to continue to be diligent. It is holiday season, so, you know, the other piece, how many of you are getting packages delivered to your homes? So it's definitely going to be, it's, it's crime season, so we certainly want folks to be aware, be alert, and let's make sure we have eyes on kids.
Thank you. Counselor Forrest, did you have a question?
Thanks, Mayor. I think, it's probably mostly for the Chief, but just in general, I, I think it's across the dais and probably even at the legislature, generally speaking, and where we talk, it's, where we are now is not acceptable. And this is not, this is, I, from what I'm hearing, it's the escalation of other crime, and, and people on this dais were talking to our residents when we were talking about being elected, about that there's crime, this crime uptick has been going on for a couple of years now, or years. And we're at the point now where I think we're looking for a plan, and we've recognized that we have an issue, and if we're sort of going to take it seriously, what is our plan? If, if this is happening throughout the state and it's known, and you're talking, you're the chief, the police chief's president, and you're talking to the police chiefs, are the police chiefs have a plan to start to change this, to keep us safe, to make recommendations? Where are they? Are they being expressed to us? Can we support you in those things? If this is a recognized thing that's been going on for twenty-four or thirty-six months, what's the plan?
All right. I'm not sure how to answer that. There is no distinct plan. Each individual community is trying to deal with the problems that they have in their communities themselves, in a sense. There's, there's, how, how, what you're, you're getting back, how do I say this? The Governor's office says the crime rate is going down. What I'm telling you is what I see is the crime rate is going up. I can feel it, I know it, I see the reports that are coming across my desk. I see the reports that, that, and it's an escalation of the type of crime. But when you have a government that's not recognizing and actually saying that the crime rate is going down, that less people are being arrested, that's why they're closing the jails, and that's why there's more people out on the street that maybe deserve to be in jail. When you take narcotics, for example, and make possession of narcotics on Mr. Mina, now those people that get arrested in those situations, and I'm not talking the first offense or second offense, what do you think is going to happen? It just keeps going. You're enabling those individuals, and the people that are using narcotics are the people who are committing the crimes. So maybe if they went to, in the old days, if they went to jail for possession of narcotics, which was a felony, then they weren't out there committing the burglaries and the shopliftings to support their habits. But there's two schools of thought on that. You know, is it fair for someone who has an addiction to go to jail? Well, as a citizen, yeah, because I don't want to be robbed by that individual. But I, I, I don't want to get into the politics of things, I don't want to make it sound like I'm casting aspersions on the state government, not these guys, but there's a problem. There is a problem in the state, and I don't see it getting better, not in the near future anyways. The legislature, they've always been receptive, I've gotten calls from, from all of these gentlemen, asking me questions, which I really appreciate, about what we're doing and trying to get the reality of things before they go and vote. And I know it's tough. Actually, Senator Doyle put me on a task force one time for liquor, liquor. Man, I'm telling you, I don't know how they do it, because I'm listening to one side, it sounds perfectly reasonable, and then to get a hundred and eighty degrees on the other side, that sounded reasonable to me too. How do you make a decision? Well, the best way to make the decisions is with the most information that you can get, that's good information, real information, not fluff. So, yeah, thank you for that there, Senator Doyle. I was an education in, in that part.
So it seems, but it seems like you, you have a, an, a clear understanding about what's going on. You talk to your colleagues, whether it's West Hartford, some of the facts you gave us, they, they've got to be handling the same stuff.
Yes.
Like, West Hartford Town Council, the Rocky Hill Town Council, has to be hearing from their individuals too. They're, you're hearing from us. I, I can't think that the legislature, not just in central Connecticut, because we've heard the same things in Ridgefield and the whole going on, that they're not hearing the same types of things from, from their group. So why, or maybe I shouldn't say, but, but take back seriously, whether it's the legislative here, I know we have one right here as well, but let's, let's put together that task force to figure out what's going on, to see if the pendulum has swung, swung in one direction too far. Let's put together that task force, not just with the police chiefs, but with the legislatures, but the state's attorneys got to be in this as well, I would think, and with the local town governments, because if it's, if it's also the mayor of Rocky Hill and Newington and Cromwell and Middletown and so on and so forth, that has to understand this concept to be able to talk to their legislative delegations to get it done, I think that that is the type of action that, at least this seat is, but I'm going to guess a lot of the public is looking for, is what is the reaction, instead of just saying it's not working?
There's nothing more powerful.
It's not working, it's not working.
There's nothing more powerful than a grassroots, you know, coming from the bottom up. That's very powerful. But the problem is, is that sometimes it doesn't rise to that level, it doesn't, you don't have enough voice, and there's other voices that are trying to drown you out, that, that have a different agenda. One of the things that I, we put up on our Facebook page was the, the op-ed that was written by the chief state's attorney, Kevin Kane, talking about juvenile problems, and that was, I think it was at least, it's probably close to a year old anyways. It's the same thing, it hasn't changed. I agree with what you're saying, and I'll take all the help I can get, and I'll take all the ideas that you can give me too, to try to combat this, but I don't know of anything specifically to try to, I mean, I can ask for more officers, that, that will help, but is it going to be the cure-all? No. I could ask for more overtime, is that going to help? Yes, but it's not going to be the cure-all.
And I'm not an expert as much as you are, or some of the people that sit on the Judiciary Committee at the legislature and so on, but I'm asking you, with the, with the leadership at the state letter, the leadership at your level, with the leadership at this level, to be able to start to come up with some actionable steps, whether it's, whether it's a roundtable between the interested parties, including, including the kids, including the kids, to be able to solve this problem, and to be able to come up with some actionable steps so that we can be part of the solve, rather than just, not just, but also sharing our, our frustrations.
Next time we arrest a sixteen year old for committing a, a serious crime, I'm going to invite you down to the station to talk to that young man. I'd like to see that.
I'm not sure that I have all the answers either.
No, but you at least get a feel for what you're dealing with, with some of these individuals.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
I just want to add something. I just want to add some historical context for you, as we go on, the rate, the, the age was raised sixteen and seventeen. For the record, all, the Police Chiefs Association, the predecessor was Chief Salvatore as president, he and the entire association opposed this legislation. All the state's attorney, including Kevin Kane, opposed this legislation. So there was opposition four years ago. It's a trend nationwide, and there was a strong input at the Capitol, very powerful individuals at the Capitol supported it, including the governor, so there was strong impetus, and it's not going to be, it's going to, I agree, it's going to take a grassroots effort to raise the consciousness of legislators, because, no, and I'm not saying all of it's bad, but there are certainly, it should be revisited and it can be changed, I think, and, but I'm, listen, I was kind of a fringe person who didn't support it, most people supported it, but I think now we're seeing the repercussions, and I think it's an opportunity for you, Counselor, to come to the Capitol and testify when that bill has a public hearing. I mean, people need to hear from the citizens, from councilmen, bring the perspective of the Capitol, because right now, maybe more this year, but prior, from year, from last year and past, it was a wilderness, no one opposed it. So now maybe it'll be a consciousness, it's an opportunity for our mayor to come and testify at the Capitol on legislation. That would be helpful to bring the consciousness to the legislators, the Judiciary Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all of you coming tonight, taking your time out of your busy schedule. We are going to ask the police chief if he can remain for public comment, but we have a representative from the MDC who has to be in Rocky Hill shortly to get to the end of their council meeting, so we're going to have to move, bump now to the MDC's brief presentation on their budget before we get into public comment. So I understand if the, our delegation's not able to stay, but we have asked the police chief to stay so that he can hear public comment, and then we can bring those remarks back to our legislators as well. Yes, may I have a motion to go out of order on the agenda?
May our motion to go out of routine on the agenda and move up MDC's presentation?
Second.
Ahead of public comments?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, thank you. Welcome. Sorry about the delay tonight.
That's okay, thank you.
And I appreciate you fitting us in before the budget vote this year.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Deputy Mayor and members of the council. John Zinsrow from the Metroon District, I'm the Chief Financial Officer, and we have three of our MDC commissioners here and attendants as well. I'm going to walk briefly through a presentation. This presentation is a shortened version of a longer presentations we're going to give probably on Monday evening, December tenth, to the full board when they consider the two thousand nineteen proposed budget. That, all these slides here are an excerpt of that presentation, which is up on the MDC website. In addition, the proposed budget books for the CIP as well as the operating expenses are up on the MDC website, as well as all the resolutions. What you see here is our meeting schedule and basically what we have accomplished so far. Last Fri, last Wednesday evening, November twenty-eighth, we had the Board of Finance meeting, as well as the Water Bureau public hearing and the Water Bureau meeting. The MDC Board of Finance did make some modifications to the proposed budget that was originally discussed with the member towns, and we're going to go through those changes, and those are reflected in this presentation. We're at the point when the next step in the process is next Monday evening, the MDC government will have a hearing, a public hearing at four forty-five PM at the district's offices at five five-five Main Street, followed by the government meeting where they're going to vote on the proposed ordinances, the sewer ordinances, and then followed thereafter by the district board meeting, where the full board will react or ask questions and consider the two thousand nineteen proposed budget that was referred over last Wednesday evening to them by the Board of Finance. Just want to go through some of the big items that are in the, that are driving the two thousand nineteen proposed budget. The MDC's collective bargaining unit agreements are expiring at the end of December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. So our strategy was to get out in front of them, as well as, you know, as, have them set, so we're proud to report that we have a new four-year collective bargaining unit agreement that will be a contract through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and we, in this negotiation, we, we tackled some of the long-term liability concerns, such as pension, OPEB, and by doing so, what we have done is we've increased the pension contribution for all collective bargaining unit folks from five percent to seven and a half percent. We've eliminated spousal and dependent medical dental coverage upon retirement for all employee, all collective bargaining and employees hired after June fifth of two thousand eighteen. For those employee group, we have also terminated the Medicare B premium reimbursement for those employees, and all new employees will be enrolled in a health savings account with the high deductible health plan, starting with the sixteen percent premium share, which will escalate to a cap of eighteen percent in the year two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two. In addition, the collective bargaining folks are going to be making an OPEB contribution of one percent for all new employees, and then all collective bargaining employees after December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. As we do, our tendency is we, we lead with the modifications to the exempt and excluded benefits. As of March first of two thousand eighteen, all exempt and excluded employees that are hired after that date are at the seven and a half percent pension contribution, they have no spousal or dependent medical dental coverage upon retirement, elimination of Medicare B, so we brought the union up in line with the exempt employees now. As you can see on the third bullet line, in order to bargain some of these long-term benefits away, we had to, had to have slightly higher COLAs, so it's a three percent COLA for nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, and reducing to two and a half percent in two thousand twenty-two. When you actually look at the, with the impact on the long-term liabilities, it's next generation, the OPEB liability to be created by the next generation workforce will be cut in half by about forty million dollars over the long term. Another main driver in the two thousand nineteen proposed budget is the MDC, as you can look in the MDC's December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen CAFR, we have an unfunded OPEB liability, which is using a discount rate because we have no assets, is around three and a half percent, and that's about in excess of three hundred million. So one of the requests from the MDC commissioners was for us to come up with a OPEB funding plan over a ten-year period to walk into the actually developed, determined contribution. We had our actuary milliman go and do that, the analysis, taking advantage of a higher discount rate up to six and a quarter, because we're making consistent because we're making consistent contributions in excess of the actual medical expenses going out for the retirees. Two thousand nineteen's contribution is nine point one-four-six million, and in ten years, that will step us up to the actually determined contribution by two thousand twenty-eight and give us about an eighteen percent funding level at that point in time. Just to put it in perspective, the nine point one-four-six million as a contribution from the operating budgets and the capital budget into the OPEB trust fund, the outflows of expenses for retiree medical in two thousand seventeen were six point six million. As you'll see in a few slides later, we had been funding the OPEB at about a five million dollar level, so we were creating a deficit in the OPEB trust fund. In addition, medical benefits for the active employees, four hundred and eighty-five employees that we have current active, are actively employed, the medical contributions over the last several years have been trimmed into the Internal Service Fund for budgetary reasons, and the Internal Service Fund is generating a deficit at the same time. At the end of two thousand seventeen in the CAFR, you'll notice a deficit balance in the Internal Service Fund of about eight point two million dollars. The majority of that is the incurable not reported liability of five point two, but there's a three million dollar cash deficit as of seventeen. And as you'll see, that deficit's going to grow through two thousand eighteen. So the medical benefits for contribution to the Internal Service Fund for the active employees is in this proposed budget of fifteen point three million between operations and CapEx. In addition, in August of two thousand and eighteen, the MDC did a general obligation bond issue in the amount of, had a hundred and twenty million dollar original par to take out our maturing bands that are supporting the water, CIP, the Non-Clean Water Project sewer programs, as well as the combined capital programs. That was issued, and successfully issued, generated a significant amount of premium. The premium was utilized to pay off the interest on the short-term borrowings, and we were able to downsize the premium, the par down to a hundred and ten point seven-seven million. But the, and the tick was three point three-one percent. The debt service on that issuance is ten point five million. About six million of it hitting the general fund, which is primarily ad valorem, and the balance of four and a half million is on the water, which is borne by the water rate. In addition, in two thousand nineteen, we're anticipating debt service associated with drinking water fund and clean water fund interim funding obligations and project loan obligations. These are from the state of Connecticut's State Revolving Fund. There's usually grants and loans, grants associated with these loans, but we're converting IFOs to PLOs, which is going from short-term financing to long-term permanent financing. And that will put another two million dollar increment of debt service on those two. In addition, in the general insurance category, as you're well aware of, the Clean Water Project has been underway since two thousand and seven. Part of the milestones in the consent order, consent decree, is to have the wet weather expansion, as well as the headworks projects down at the South Meadows in Hartford, as well as in Rocky Hill, for them to come online. So as those are coming along, as online is twelve thirty-one eighteen, those asset values in excess of a half a billion dollars are being now transferred off our builder's risk policies, which have been funded by the Clean Water Project surcharge onto our property casually. So that's driving an insurance premium increase around seventy-five thousand dollars. And as well as in the Internal Service Fund, we're going to have to increase the self-insured retention and claims contribution by about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars due to expenses incurred by the districts for sewer and water backups. Of note, everybody's probably read in the paper about Lynbrook and West Hartford. Those are the kind of instances that go into the self-insured retention fund. In addition, in our water portion of our budget contained within the special agreements and programs for water, riverfront recapture is being consistent. Originally in the budget that was proposed, it was being reduced to six hundred thousand, but by action of the Board of Finance, it was put back up to its two thousand eighteen adopted budget funding level of one point two-five million dollars. That is purely in the water side and on the water rates, that's passed through on the water bills. And in addition, the Operation Fuel Program, we ran a pilot for needy customers for fifty thousand dollars in two thousand eighteen. We're once again funding that in the two thousand nineteen proposed budget in the same amount. When you, when you take into account what I've just spoke of, when you look at our two thousand nineteen proposed operating expenditures, this schedule here, I've broken them down as a percentage of the total budget, and you will see that our payroll and payroll-related expenses are thirty-eight percent of our budget. So when you look at that dollar amount, it's increasing, ten point six-five million dollars. In there is your wages, it's your employee benefits, your pension contributions, and your OPEB, which I have a slide I'll walk you through later. The debt portion of our budget is thirty-four point five percent of our total budget. And as I just mentioned, we did the GEO bond, and you can see that's increasing nine million dollars. That's driven by the issuance of the August GEO bond, as well as the conversion of the IFOs to PLOs for the clean water and drinking water funds. General operations increasing three hundred and eighty-one thousand, that's about eight point five percent of our total budget. In January of two thousand and eighteen, we had the highest amount of breaks in the water mains on history with the MDC. That resulted in unfavorable overtime variances in excess of five hundred thousand, as well as the ancillary materials from stock to fill in the aggregate to put the pipe back into the ground, and that's generating an increase there as well. The contingency line, going up from two million five fifty in two thousand eighteen to four million in two thousand nineteen, that's not a contingency for expenses, that's an offset to the revenue. As you may have been aware of, or you've heard, at the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, they took over the Hartford landfill. The Hartford landfill is discharging groundwater through a deep permit into the MDC sewer. We have a rate for that because that, there's all kinds of different elements in that water that need to be treated that is corrosive. We charge thirteen cents per gallon to treat that. In the two thousand and eighteen adopted budget, there was two point five-five million dollars in revenue that was supposed to be invoiced and was invoiced to the Connecticut Deep. They are not paying it. So this contingency is a reserve against the revenue. And based upon the actual flows, in two thousand eighteen, we were able to get the actual flows. It's about four million dollars a year. So this is just offsetting to zero out the revenue. There is discussions between the district and the Connecticut Deep, as well as OPM, to come to a resolution. We have not received one at this point yet. As I mentioned before, payroll, payroll and related expenses, this is a rather significant increase, as I said before. On the regular pay line, it's an increase of two point two million. How is that breaking, broken up, as we discussed earlier with the collective bargaining unit contracts? The three percent COLA from two thousand nineteen, for two thousand nineteen to achieve the long-term savings and the pension and OPEB benefits, that's contributing about a one point one million of that two point two million dollar increase. The collective bargaining unit steps is another three hundred thousand. And there's a transfer, as you can see in the table in the bottom, we're transferring some CIP, five CIP headcount upwards into the operating budget. You may be aware that over the course of the past seven to ten years, the district has been doing a capital program to replace water meters, install RF units. We have gone through the full cycle, so now we will have ninety-eight percent on the Itron RF meters and reading program, so therefore, it's no longer going to be a capital project. We're bringing those folks back into our maintenance budget. So that transfer is contributing about four hundred thousand dollars of that two point two million dollar increase, and we have a few new positions that are contributing another three hundred thousand. The overtime increase of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, we've kept our overtime hours basically flat. Hundred and ten thousand of the one eighty-four is the impact of the COLA. The employee benefits increased to five point four million dollars. I was talking just a few minutes ago about the medical contributions. In the middle of the page here, you'll see the medical contribution line. And the way this works is, we have the two budgets. We have the OpEx headcount, which is in water and sewer. That is a budgetary contribution into the Internal Service Fund. The actual claims get paid out of the Internal Service Fund. And there's, the CIP headcount also contributed into the Internal Service Fund. In perspective, in two thousand seventeen, we contributed eight point one million dollars into the Internal Service Fund between the OpEx and CIP headcount. We had thirteen point five million dollars in actual medical claims. In two thousand eighteen, we contributed nine million. Our estimated actual is fourteen point three million. So obviously, in two thousand, to two thousand eighteen at nine million dollars, we need to take a corrective action. So that's what's driving the fifteen point three million dollars of medical claims contribution in the two budgets. We're taking our two thousand eighteen estimated actual, and we're inflating it by medical inflation at seven percent to get to the fifteen point three million. At the same time, on the first part, the OPEB contribution, I talked about the ten-year step into the actually determined contribution. That's nine million one forty-five. That's being budgeted, and that's the split between the operating piece and the capital piece. Pension contribution, five million six eighty-eight, that's a reduction from the prior year. What we do with the pension assumptions, we look at the eight member towns, and we try to be within the realm of the member towns' assumptions with regards to amortization of the prior service costs. We're at twenty-one years, as well as the discount rate, we're at seven and a quarter percent, which is consistent, right in the middle of all the eight member towns. As I mentioned before, here is the debt service line. Basically, the main driver is the August two thousand eighteen general obligation bond. The interest just from that issue was four point five million. As you can see, the interest on bonds is going from eighteen point nine million up to twenty-two point nine million. So that's basically a four million dollar increase. The offset reduction, obviously, is, you know, as we're paying down some older debt. In the same way, you see on the principal and bonds, thirty-four point nine million up to forty-one point nine. That's an increase of seven. Basically, it's the six million from the general obligation issue, plus the portions from the drinking water and clean water fund IFOs. So those are the expense drivers. So on the other side of the equation is the revenue. As you can see here, those, the water utility budget is here for the revenues on the top and the expenses on the bottom at ninety-eight point two million. They balance, we don't make profit. We establish revenues to equal the expected expenditures. Flipping over to the next page, primarily, the operating revenues are ninety-five million, ninety-five point nine million, and there are three categories. The top piece there, the service charges, this is your fixed monthly charges, twenty-four point seven million. That's your customer service charge for a traditional five eighths inch meter household, fourteen ninety-eight. That's remaining flat with two thousand eighteen. It also includes approximately one point seven million dollars of the non-member town surcharge revenue. That's also flat with last year. And this category also includes the special capital charges for the non-member town, if we, non-member towns. If we do capital projects just to benefit members in the town of Farmington, Glastonbury, South Windsor, and East Granby, they bear the entire amount of those capital improvements. It's not included in the base water rate. On the bottom section, on the other operating revenues, two of the large increases on fire protection services is due to our rate structure. Some, certain commercial entities have what we call a dual-purpose meter. They have one meter for their water service, as well as the same meter for the fire protection. So what we're now doing is, having a fire protection is a uniqueness to that customer, so we're charging them for them. If you had a customer that had two feeds, one for fire service and one for their service, they'd have, they'd pay with the rate. So we modified the rate structure to capture the fire protection cost associated with dual meters. And then down on the bottom, in the other water revenues, the increase of nine hundred thousand dollars, that's related to cross-connection testing. What is cross-connection testing? If you have an irrigation system, you have a backflow valve so that if there's anything that happens, it doesn't feed back into our system. Thank you. And we're establishing that at ninety dollars a test. So those are, it's on an angle there, that wouldn't be good. So those are the main drivers. And if you look at, in the water use, the sixty-four point four million dollars, what that is, that's budgeted consumption expectations of eighteen point four million CCFs. A CCF is seven hundred and forty-eight gallons, times our proposed water, base water rate of three dollars and fifty cents. Our consumption for two thousand nineteen is flat with two thousand eighteen. The two thousand eighteen's budget was calling for eighteen point four. Where we expect to come out for eighteen is about eighteen point two million. We're a little bit short of consumption, as you can all appreciate the month of August. I think we set a record with the amount of rainfall, and I think we just did it for November as well. So when it rains, people don't use the water to irrigate, and they don't go out, so we sell less water. What does this all mean to the individual household? On this slide here, we've chosen a hundred CCFs. It's kind of a, you know, it varies by what you have. My household, I live in West Hartford, a member town, I use more than a hundred CCFs a year. But this is kind of a typical standard that's used in engineering firms and so forth. So as you can see, the two thousand eighteen rate structure is three dollars and fourteen cents. That's going up to three dollars and fifty cents. So it's about an eleven point four-six percent change on the volumetric water. Clean Water Project charge, the next line, is proposed to go from three dollars and eighty cents to four dollars and ten cents. That's the two point five billion dollar multi-year project, which is based upon the two thousand and fifteen Long-Term Control Plan, is to be completed around two thousand twenty-nine or so. You may recall, a couple of weeks ago, Joe LaLiberty, and I was here, that he made a presentation with regard to the Integrated Plan. The Integrated Plan is going to be the two thousand eighteen submission for modification. So we're hoping that we'll be able to have the support and implement the Integrated Plan through the approved Long-Term Control Plan, and that will, as I'll show you a little bit later, take a little pressure off the ad valorem. One here also, the water customer service charge I mentioned is staying flat. And the sewer customer service charge, which was introduced in two thousand eighteen at three dollars per month, is going up to six dollars. So all in all, for a member town customer, about a hundred and two dollar increase per year. So that's about eight dollars and, I think, fifty cents per month. On a non-member town below, as you can see, they don't pay the Clean Water Project because the Clean Water Project is only for MDC customers that have both MDC sewer and water. Otherwise, you can see they're paying the same general, they're paying the same customer service charge. The GS is the general surcharge outside the district. Their increase per year is about thirty-six dollars, about three dollars a month. What this does not show, it doesn't show the special capital charges because there's a unique charge for Glastonbury, South Windsor, and Farmington. On this chart here, based on a hundred CCFs, this is, this does not include the special sewer service charges. This is just looking at the base water service. If you're using a hundred CCFs for the previous slide, it will cost you about five hundred and thirty dollars a year for water service. That's up from the four ninety-four from our two thousand and eighteen adopted rates. And I'm showing a comparison of some of the larger water companies in the state of Connecticut. Aquarian Northern Division, that's Granby and Simsbury portions. Connecticut Water and Unionville Division, that's actually MDC Water. We sell that to them. Aquarian Water Eastern Division, that's their largest amount of customers. They're at five hundred and seventy-eight dollars per year. South Central Regional Water Authority is very, an agency similar to us, six hundred and forty-three dollars per year. And Connecticut Water, which is a Connecticut Water Division, the largest division, is eight hundred and eighteen dollars. So for the base water service, we're a cost-effective, high-quality deliverer. On the general fund, the sewer side of the business, of the concern of the councils here, the top line, the ad valorem, the tax on the member towns. Currently, we have reduced that amount. When we talked to the member towns, it was at fifteen percent increase. It's now at seven percent. How did we do that? We cut some headcount out, not a lot, but the material end, you'll see, the last line of the revenue, surplus designated from prior year of three point five million dollars. We talked about the groundwater remediation revenue from the state of Connecticut Deep for the Hartford landfill that they're not paying, which is reserved. We also have found that there's other customers that have popped up that are using it. The state of Connecticut Deep issues the permits, and then they don't tell us, but then the customers have to report through a DMR report on a monthly basis, which is a discharge monthly report. There's a sizable customer in East Hartford that started discharging, was not in our forecast, or was not in our adopted two thousand eighteen revenue stream, and we learned about it, and it started invoicing July first. So the impact of that revenue from July first of two thousand eighteen through December is forecasted to be three point five million dollars. So since it was unbudgeted, it would be increasing the general fund balance. And we're within our, let's call our rating metrics for fund balance as percentage of revenues, based upon the rating categories that we desire. So we're going to pull that revenue, one-time revenue forward to offset the ad valorem for two thousand nineteen. 2019. The other increase is revenue from other government agencies increased, that's due to increased sludge. We take sludge and septic down at the Hartford plant, we incinerate it, we generate electricity. We put about 40%, up to 40% of our footprint of our electricity on that facility by doing this. So it's a win-win, we get revenue for taking it, and we generate electricity, so we don't have to pay every source. Other sewer revenues, going up, 2.9 million. That's a combination of the septic taking in, but there's also 1.9 million dollars of revenue associated with that large customer that contributed $3.5 million in 2018. So the question, whenever you show their revenue, have they paid and you expect it? Unlike Connecticut deep, yes, we invoiced 1.8 million dollars, and they paid that in October, so we're anticipating to be paid for all that. The avalorm, you can see the breakout, the avalorm is allocated to the eight-member towns, based upon the formula in our charter, which is you take your prior three-year cash receipts, you know, and you, they're approximate to the entire eight-member towns, and you determine the percentage. So Weathersfield is at 8.26% of the avalorm for 2019, pretty consistent with 2018, at The Weathersfield avalorm is going up about $272,000 year-on-year. And one of the items I want to comment, so on a, it's a $271,600 increase, a 7.3% increase year-on-year. That's on the MDC's calendar basis. The MDC is on a fiscal calendar, January through December basis, y'all are on a municipal calendar basis, a July 1 through June 30. The avalorm is collected through four payments, a January, April, July, and October payment. Our January and April payments do not exceed 50% of the prior year's avalorm to account for the differences in municipal years, because you're already in your fiscal 19 budget. So the most, majority of the increase gets put into, or the increase gets put into the July and October payments, which will be in your fiscal 20 budget. So you'll see, on your member town basis, this is an increase of about 10% from your fiscal 18 to your fiscal 19, because of the increase from last year was 8%. You're getting that increase in your July and October. This slide here, and I'll, they make this comment, our independent consumer advocate always talks to me, this is just the base sewer cost for an average residential, single-owner occupied home in each of the eight-member towns. And this is just basically taking a look at the, at the housing inventories that are provided by the American Community Survey from the census, extrapolating what the average market value is, and applying the assessable 70% factor for all towns, with the exception of Hartford, Hartford's at 32%. And then using your adopted mill rates, calculating what the average property tax is, as well as I'm applying our avalorm on the municipal calendar basis, relative to your adopted 19 budget, times that percent, it works out that the base cost of sewer service in Weathersfield is $300 per annum. This does not include the special sewer service charge, which would be, if it's for 2019 proposed, if you're using 100 CCFs at $4.10, that would be another $410 on top of this. Little bit different than the basis that Joe LaLiberty had presented with the integrated plan, because they're doing it on a per-household basis. A household also includes apartments, this is just single-family residence. Clean water project, as we were talking about, the proposed rate for 2019 is $4.10. And just to put this in perspective, this project, there have been two referendums on this, one in 2006 for 800 million, a second one in 2012 for another 800 million, and $140 million, $140 million with supplemental authorization. So the total capital authorizations through the end of December 31st, '17, was 1.74 billion. Over the course of time, starting January 1st of 2008, we've collected $330 million in clean water project charge revenue. We've received a little over $256 million in grants from the state revolving fund, and we have outlaid $1.122 billion in capital to pay to contractors. And we have debt service that's totaling through the end of December 31st, 2017, 150.7 million. And you can see that through September 30th of 2018, I've issued $770.6 million of long-term debt associated with the clean water project. This is all being paid for by the special sewer service charge. Primarily, I'm happy to say, the majority of it is clean water fund, state revolving fund loans, which are 20-year loans at 2%, and they usually come with the grants that you saw above. But as you see, in the 2018 forecast and 2019 forecast column, I have debt service that's increasing for 47.2 million for '18, up to 49.1 million in 2019. And the chart in the bottom is the curve of the special sewer service charge. We're looking for a peak, based upon the adopted long-term control plan of about $5.35. It's been going up smoothly and methodically to take any volatility out of the payments. As you can see, at the rate of $4.10, that will generate $66 million in revenue, and $49 million of it is going to be paid out for debt service. And then there's another $8 million that covers overhead. So we're spending 57 of the 66, and the remaining piece goes in the rate stabilization fund. So as you see at the back end of the curve, where it just drops down dramatically, that's defusing the debt when the coverages have all been met on the revenue bonds. I know that we've made the presentation on the integrated plan. What this chart basically shows is, on the top, is the forecasted avalorm increases, they're highlighted in the yellow boxes. Under the integrated plan on top, and on the bottom, SAS code means that is, the, there are certain projects that are currently being funded on avalorm moved to the clean water project. And you can see, if we stay the course in keeping them in the CIP for the sewer funded by avalorm, every two years, you get a mid-double-digit increase, and that's associated with the timing of issuing the GO bonds to pay for that debt, those capital projects. If we move it over into the clean water project, you know, it stabilizes the avalorm increases, and you'll see that in the periods of 2021 to 2023. The clean water project, this is a reminder, that's a federally mandated Department of Justice consent order, consent decree. We're not doing it because we want to, we're doing it because we have to, and this is the funding in order to get that done. Then on the last slide, I have detailed the capital improvement plan for $73.1 million. This is just the water infrastructure at 29.9 million. These are the various projects that we need to approve in order to keep the water system at its service levels. And the wastewater projects, there's sewer projects that are non-clean water project-related. The hope is that a good portion of this 23.9 million would go onto the integrated plan, if that's approved by the Connecticut deep, when we make our 2018 long-term control plan submission. And then the bottom piece is just our projects, they're mainly employees in here. This is when we talk about our capital hedge employees. Our engineering service, construction services, survey, construction, and technical service, those are our people that are working and managing the capital programs that we have, and they're capitalized with the assets. So I know that was a lot, it was kind of a whirlwind, but that's kind of an update, I said, is that, you know, we're, this information's up on the website. I know we have the three commissioners that can help field some questions as well.
Thank you. If I can just introduce our commissioners, we have Commissioner Camiliari Adel Engardo here, and thank you for coming tonight and being here to listen to council and get our take on this budget. Do we have council members who have questions? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I was lucky enough to come to your October 16th meeting. We made a similar presentation, and I've seen some changes in here from them. The next day, I believe your chairman, your CEO, and we're meeting with DEP regarding the charges that are due from the state. What was the result of that committee, and is any of that money coming forward?
There is no resolution to that issue at this point. Still ongoing discussion.
That's because of the additional amount, too, for the additional sludge coming out of the Hartford landfill, which they're saying they don't have the money to pay for.
Yeah, they don't, the bill is up, they owe us, it's around $7 million now.
All right. And you did say that if that money does ever come across, that would go to reduce the avalorm in the future?
Yes, the resolution that for the, that was, that went, that was approved, that Board of Finance says that in the event that the state of Connecticut deep does pay, it will be returned back to the towns through an adjustment to the tax warrant. To put it in perspective, as you saw, the contingency is $4 million. In 2019's budget, we're expecting $4 million invoicing to the Connecticut deep. The avalorm in 2018 was $45 million, so it's around a 9% of the, a 9% increase because of the non-payment. So we're currently at 7%. We were able to whittle off 2% if they had been stepping up and paying.
At that same meeting, John, you were talking about reinstating some positions that you have left vacant in your budget to, you know, just keep things going, but you wanted to put them back in this year. Do those positions need to be filled this year, or could they be held off longer just to lower some of these things? Because, you know, you've gone from 15% avalorm down to, you know, 7.5. You know, that's great, you cut it in half, but, you know, social security's coming in at 2.8 this year, and it's going to be hard for our people to pay this. Is there anything you can do to reduce any expenses further?
From what, from when we last talked in the presentations from September 17th and then October 16th, we reduced five headcount out of the operating budget, just from the standpoint of vacancy, as I know the consumer advocate, David Silverstone, had asked us to do that. If you see in the schedule on the bottom, our projected 2018 headcount in the operating budget is 399 folks. We're moving five people from CIP up in there, so we're, in essence, we're at 404. So we have, you know, we're going from 404 to 415, that's 11 heads, and unfortunately, a lot of them are in my department. That's why you see me here quite a bit.
So as a result of that, if, you know, OPEB is going up, then CIP should be going down in expenses because of that?
Yes. And that's more or less the decrease in the CIP is to the conclusion of the CIP for the RF meter replacement program that ran its course. So those, there were headcount that were budgeted in there. Those five headcount are being transitioned into a maintenance mode to address various other maintenance issues that we have.
Are there other questions? Councilor Hurley?
Yeah, could you go back to the increase in pay, the percent?
Yes. The collective bargaining slide?
Yeah.
That one?
It says 3% for the next three years. None of the towns around, or anybody, gets 3% anymore, even with givebacks in the union. So who negotiates your contracts?
Our lawyers, and obviously with input from personal pension insurance, these are, I mean, from the changes, the, where we moved from is the pension contributions were 5%, they're moved to 7.5. There was, there was no, there was spousal and dependent medical, I mean, what, you know, as I said before, is that's a $40 million savings over the course of the next generation of employees. And by doing this, this will cut the OPEB liability significantly. The high deductible health plan, obviously, you can see that the medical claims that we're putting in for our traditional PPO, that's where the majority of the people are, that's 15.3 million. We need to transition the folks to an HSA with a high deductible health plan, put some consumerism in them, so that they will hopefully drive down the medical claims, as well as in conjunction with wellness programs. More than 45% of the MDC's active employees are in our 184 union. These are our guys out in the street, the blue-collar union, that are, you know, out at 3:00 AM in the morning, knee-deep in water and in two-degree weather, fixing water mains. It's a very, they're soil-of-the-earth people, and it's a very difficult job. So there's a lot of, you know, injuries associated with jobs, we have high workers' comp costs. One of the questions I didn't receive here, but I received is, why didn't you consider a defined contribution pension plan? Because, because of the work. The studies have found out, in extreme blue-collar environments such as this, you know, we need to get guys out around 53 to 55 when they hit their rule of 85, because they have had, subjected themselves to 30-something years of doing this labor, and they have higher incidences of workers' comp. And if we just allow them to self-select in, for their own, in a defined contribution plan, they don't have enough money to retire on. Where the DB plan, at the 2% for each year of service, they have something that plans for their retirement. So there was a lot of thought that went into the structure of the collective bargaining agreements, and one thing that's not on the slide is, when I joined the district in 2007, we had in excess of 700 employees, we're down to 485. So there's a lot of reduction in human capital, which a lot of it was, you know, investment in technology. The other things that were done in the prior collective bargaining sessions with multitasking job descriptions, you know, one classification, you don't need six people to show up to do a job, you can have two of them. So a lot of effort over the last eight years has been put in and thought on the collective bargaining process. I mean, of course, in the 2019, in the COLAs, there is a, there's a premium for the givebacks. So, I mean, there is, there's something in order to bargain to get it.
Any other questions?
Sure.
Go ahead, continue.
In the regular pay, it's up 2.2 million, 1.1 cost of living, 400,000 CIP movement, and then 340,000 for increase in headcount?
Yes.
Because you had lower headcount last year than your budget, but you're still going up by four or five. And then, but it's, the first comment is increment 300,000?
The steps. In the contracts, the collective bargaining unit contracts, the job classifications of eight pay steps. So based upon satisfactory performance evaluation, they can get a step.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, I just think you should probably think about moving your pension, at least for newer employees that come on.
Thank you. Councilor Rell?
Well, I didn't have anything really to say, but I have to agree with Mike on that. It's been, year after year, the MDC comes in here for a request to go up in their budget. This time, you know, the avalorm alone at 7.3%. Mike touched on payroll increases, average homeowner going over $100 a year. I think at some point, the MDC should be looking more closely at, you know, reforming their pension plan, you know, as Mike said, but also with the decrease in staff that you've said from, you know, 700 down to 485. Are we seeing, though, an increase in the higher-end salary?
What you're, what you're seeing is that there's, there's, over the tenure that I've been there, I've been here since April of 2007, there has been, obviously, there's been an investment in information technology. You know, obviously, there's a lot of data that has to be processed, we're on SAP, so our IT resources were inadequate about five years ago, so there have been some increase in headcount, offset by some lower wage jobs that have gone. You know, a lot of the headcount reduction from 700 down to this, there was the CRA contract, so you had a bunch of operators, probably 88 operators, associated with that contract that have gone away as well. So there is some, as technology has changed, as well as the environment has changed, there has been some trade-offs, so some of the replacement salary has had a higher salary point than some of the ones that went away.
And I don't know if this slide was included up for the public, but we have it for the CIP. The increase in CIP over, I think, 2019, 2020, was increased from 20, yeah, 2019 to 2020, 29,900,000 to 39,500,000? Is that up there? No.
You're talking this slide?
It's actually one after that slide, in our presentation.
You got the multi-year? The, just to put it in perspective, so, yeah, so in the multi-year capital plan for water, you have 29.9 million in 2019, what's on here, 2020 is forecast at 39.5.
That looked to me to be the highest of the increase. The next one for wastewater was only 4 million, less than 4 million, and then the next one is, you know, 1.1 million. What are we going to see in the future for possible increases? Going with the 3% for the next three years, 2.5% in the fourth year, you know, those are obviously going to go up, but when we jump for our wastewater, not wastewater, but for our water capital improvement by nearly $10 million, that's going to be a substantial... by nearly $10 million, that's going to be a substantial...
Two things that I know that we have shared with members of the town, member town. Currently, the model that we're following is $35 million a year for capex for sewer infrastructure, 25 million a year for water, and about 15 for combined. That's based upon an engineering analysis of the break-even point. If you don't spend the capital, you're going to increase on the maintenance side of it. You have to appreciate that a lot of the facilities, especially with the water, we have great water. We have an abundance of water through the drought in 2016. We never got below 75% of capacity. We had over a year and a half of supply. The transmission line from the reservoirs, we're talking 19-teens, you've got West Hartford filters, the advantage of 1920. You also have, you know, aging water pipe in the ground. So there, you know, I guess, you know, part of the discussion we've had with the consumer advocate, and he said it on record, is that in the '70s, '80s, and '90s, and not much different than you look at our bridges and our roads around the state and around the country, not a lot of infrastructure investment. So these assets, you know, water pipe, sewer pipe, you know, as we saw the integrated plan, you see the condition of some of the sewers that are collapsing. These things have probably a useful life of about 100 to 120 years. The average age of some of these assets are, you know, overall is maybe 60 to 80 years, but we have some, you know, on the extremes. We have 1850 water pipes that are hollowed-out tree logs. So there is an asset management plan that's forecasting capital to keep us. We've had some engineering studies that say that 25 million a year for the water is not enough.
Are any other municipalities seeing the work that we're seeing here in Silvestine Highway, Mill Street, Middletown Avenue at all? I mean, I don't know if you're familiar with the project at all. I know a couple of months ago, we kind of had a discussion on that.
Correct.
Are any other municipalities faced with that burden of, you know, construction going on for multi-year?
There's construction going throughout all the eight-member towns. I mean, I'd say probably less in East Hartford, but there's emergency repairs. But I'd say that you'll see a fair amount of work, whether it be sewer or water. There's water main projects going throughout the eight-member towns. There's water main projects that we need to do in the non-member towns as well, but that's borne on the non-member town customers solely. So the need is across the eight-member towns. Things such as replacing redundant transmission line is the feed from the reservoir into the treatment facilities. There'll be some analysis as to, as consumption drops, you know, about what to do with the two-water treatment facilities. We're going to need to have some refurbishments of those as well. But that's going to benefit, that benefits everybody.
Had there ever been any discussions within the MDC about, you know, repaying some of the folks who've been negatively impacted by any of that construction at all? I mean, any breaks to homeowners who've had to contend with trucks at, like you said, 7:00 in the morning? These workers coming out?
I mean, you can make that case for almost any customer in the MDC.
Right. That's what you'd said, that every town is faced with it. Is there any possibility of a give-back or, you know, let's give a break to some of the ratepayers?
Well, one of the things that we contend with is with the Niagara, we have to have a uniform rate structure. So it becomes difficult to treat customers differently. And in the event, if you could do that, if you're going to give this group, because I just said before that we're a nonprofit, revenue is equal expenses, if you're giving a break to one customer group, another customer group is going to go up. And, you know, from the standpoint on the sewer, you have a cost-of-service study, you know, which the consumer advocate was talking about, which is also up on the website that supports the sewer user charge, because the question is, you know, Avalorm versus sewer user charge, because the sewer user charge is your high-flow industrial customers plus all your tax exempts. You have to basically have a model that shows the balance, which we've always had. And we proved it out by doing it in the methodology that the consumer advocate wanted to do. We've always had a rate structure studied that we've done internally. So it's kind of hard to do that.
Give a break to one, not the other. Speaking of breaks, Niagara, you had mentioned that, I mean, are they fully online right now? Are they in production?
They've been in production since 2017. They originally had two lines, I believe, I had heard when I went to Bloomfield a couple of weeks ago. They're putting an application in for another line, for a third line. So their total proposal was four lines, so they have two active. I think they're going to go to a third line. I'm not privy to their business plans, though.
Now, are they generating any revenue for the MDC?
Yes.
Do we have those numbers at all?
They, in 2000, from the, from when I know that for 2017, they did 375,000 CCFs. So, you know, from the standpoint, they're paying sewer user, the special sewer service charge on that, as well as the base water rate, and they have their meter charges as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Rell Vatina, do you have time to make, to take more questions? Have you?
I have a couple.
Have you gone over?
My pocket's buzzing.
Yeah. Thanks for your time tonight. Just two observations. Have you guys ever done a system-wide audit for leaks?
We know that we have lost water, and yes, there are leaks. The system is old, so we have about a lost water around 20%.
And is some of the capital improvements to stop those so that there isn't that waste?
Yeah, there is, you know, of note, probably in 2017, there were some leaky stop valves out in West Hartford that were costing $1 million each. We replaced those. They're leaking out just outside the Hartford water filtration, water treatment plant. So we do reactively look. As part of the January breaks, we did an exhaustive search to find out what happened. You know, there's a lot of abandoned buildings in Hartford and some of the other communities, so there may be a service leak in that building, and if it's abandoned, no one's there to tell. So we have, you know, when we see the spikes in our production going out, the meters going out of the water treatment, we send the crews out looking. If it's not apparent that's in the street, we start looking for it.
And then how are you able to recoup that if there is an abandoned building?
Well, the lost water is, we have, like I said, is our capacity, we have almost two years of capacity. So it's, the conversion cost is small. It's, you know, we still have, we're an infrastructure-driven fixed-cost organization, so it doesn't, there's not a lot of variable cost to create more water.
I mean, when you're fixing it because of a leak, and it's an abandoned property, does the bank then get the lien and the bill to pay you back for the fix?
Well, we'll charge. If we have to go out, what we'll do is, we find the leak. If it's their internal services, we'll shut off the water at the gate box. And the fix is on, if it's their internal, if it's their internal plumbing that's leaking, they have to fix their own, and we won't turn the water on until they fix it.
My other question was, when was the last time that you all restructured your debt to make your payments more affordable? Is that an option? Has it been done?
Well, obviously, we have taken, the laws have changed where you can't do advanced refunding anymore. They have to go the course of 10 years. The only debt that we would have, and there's currently, we do take advantages of any refunding opportunities. I'm currently looking at our 2010 and 2013 as they're coming due in the short term to look at that. 2008, we've already refunded that. So given the current environment and the tax, you know, the tax code, I'm limited at what I can do.
Thank you. Councilor Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. John, thanks for staying late. Appreciate your presentation. My head is spinning a little bit. I work in finance, but there are a lot of numbers here to try and keep track of. But I have two that I think are simple and I hope quick questions. If you can go just to Slide 10, 10 for me for a second, please.
That one?
Nope. The one with the totals, I think from 61 to 72 million, it's just the total increase. I thought it was Slide 10, but, yeah, your pages are different. Regardless, so there was a 13% increase on those changes. The question is, what was that increased number from last year? So from 2018 to 2019, it's 13%? You had that one. You just had it.
That slide.
Yep, that's good. So if you look at the percent change, do you, can you tell us what it was for the prior year?
I don't have that right on me. I'd have to open the 2018 budget.
Can you get us that?
Yeah, I can send that to you.
Great. And the last question is, I know next Monday, December 10th, is your vote, is your district vote. Can you just tell us what that vote is? Is it on the entire budget? Is it on, just explain to us, I think it's a district vote, is that right?
It's on the entire budget. It's on the operating budget, it's on the capital, you know, the capital improvement budget. So the way it goes through is that there's capital improvement resolutions, which is, you know, the last page here. They're going to go through that first. Those are all the capital authorizations. They'll go to approve that, and then they'll vote. And that gives us the ability to spend capital money as well as issue debt to fund it. Next piece they'll go through is they'll approve the expenditures by category, which is this format here. They'll approve the expenditures, and then they'll go through to the revenues, to approve the revenues to support those expenditures, and then they go through with each of the individual rates, such as approving the base water rate, the customer service charge by meter size, the non-member towns, and then they also approve the sewer ordinances as well. So through the course of the process, we had a public hearing for water rates, because those are driven by water ordinances. And we're going to have on December 10th, a government public hearing, because that's going to be the sewer ordinances are the governance side of the business.
I got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions? Councilor Hurley?
I just had a comment, I guess, to our commissioners. I would hope that the commissioners vote no on the budget.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, John, thank you for staying late, and I appreciate the presentation. And I will just say that I am worried about the sustainability of these large increases. I think a 7.3% increase this year is a large increase for our town to absorb, and the 11% increase to our residents for their water usage. And I know that a lot of us spoke to the increases last year, the large increases last year, hoping we wouldn't see an additional large increase this year, and we have. So I have concerns about the sustainability of all of it.
And that's one of the reasons that we've come before the council with the integrated plan for the long-term control plan. Number one is to move some of the capital improvements off of the Avalorm, which goes to you guys directly, as well as to extend the time to do the clean water project from, instead of having a completion date of 2029, to push it out 40 years so that we can have additional relief on the customers. Because as you see in there, of the increase, there's $30 of the $100 increase on the homeowners is from the clean water project, and that's driven by the consent order, consent decree to be done by 2029.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to our commissioners for coming tonight and listening to our comments. We appreciate your time as well. We are now moving into the public comment portion of our meeting. Members of the public have five minutes to come and speak. I ask that you state your name and address, and speak clearly into the microphone. Is there anybody who would like to speak tonight? Soon as the screen comes up. Mike?
Hi, my name is Mike Glibb. I live on 51 O'Gill Drive in Weathersfield, Connecticut. I came in today very concerned about the safety and what was being done about it. And I just want to thank the police chief. I was very impressed with what you said, what you're doing. I do think you presented a plan that others here can take and act on. The biggest thing, obviously, is the state law that's treating 16, 17-year-olds as juveniles. To me, that's very clear, and I would strongly suggest to our state legislatures to act on that immediately. I felt that there was always do a lot of analysis. I'm concerned about those comments. I work in technology. When we put a bad change to production, we back it out, and then we figure out how to fix it. So I would strongly recommend, with high urgency, to get that law changed. That was very clear from the police chief's comments. We cannot live like this going forward in Weathersfield. Last week's events were very disturbing. I have a child the same age of the one that was attacked, and we need to take this extremely urgent. I'm also very appreciative of the police working a little bit of overtime. I would suggest, I don't know the dollars, but if that's a solution that helps us keep our kids safe, we should have a dialogue of whether we should be spending that money. I would support that discussion big time. If we can get the dollars out there and have a public discussion, I think that's really important. We just need to take this extremely seriously, and I urge everybody to do that. And I really did enjoy the presentation and discussion today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Tonight for mics to talk.
Short guy. Good evening, everyone. Mike Barassa, 248 Dale Road. And I'd like to thank the chief for his comments about what's going on in Weathersfield. And I'd like to say, I was a victim of one of those car thefts. And, you know, it's an unpleasant feeling. And it's not just the car being taken. You know, I listened to the legislators on what the laws were and so forth, and Russ educated me a little bit over a beer tasting event on the voting, and it's a difficult job that they have because everything's bundled together. But clearly, you know, the chief gave statistics, and those statistics, although as prominent as they were, are not the true statistics out there. Because the unreported break-ins of people rifling through cars is probably tenfold of what the chief talked about. Now, growing up in, you know, I grew up in Waterbury. We moved to Weathersfield for a reason. And what I'm seeing now is a transition going on, and we've been here, I've been here 20 years. It's not the Weathersfield that my wife grew up in anymore. And there needs to be some changes. Now, if you talk to, you know, the chief said that the crime rate, he feels, has gotten higher and higher because he could feel it. Well, it's true. You know, I grew up with the commissioner of Department of Corrections. I'm very friendly with a lot of the state's attorneys. I'm very close with a lot of police officers, and they'll tell you, it's a joke on what's going on out there. Nobody, they tell you point-blank, nobody goes to jail anymore. Now, I don't know. My car got stolen. Its value was over $30,000. That's grand theft larceny in my day, but now it's a slap on the wrist. It was, it's not a mistake. That's a choice they made. A mistake is maybe taking some bubble gum from the local store, maybe rifling through the cars. But stealing the car is a conscious decision, and that law needs to be changed. And I think everyone in here feels that. And it's a shame if we don't. And Senator Fonfera said we have to find the balance. Well, that's an easy balance right there. That's, we've got to make a clear-cut choice of there has to be repercussions. If they, grand theft larceny, there needs to be repercussions. And I feel sorry for the officers that work in this town and throughout the state. They know they're going to go after this on a pursuit and chase them and arrest them. And then two days later, they're out, and they're, you know, flipping off our officers and telling them, they know. As soon as they lock them up, the next day, they're walking around making fun of our police officers. It's got to stop. And what they do every day is unbelievable. And, you know, I like, never mind the Democrats, never mind the Republicans, you've got to make the people accountable at the state to change this law. It has to be done, and it's an epidemic. And if anyone believes it's not an epidemic, well, you're missing the boat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Come on up.
Good evening. David Kurek, 149 Broad Street. I was, I want to talk about the MDC and this budget, this plan, this 40-year plan. And I remember when they were here, was it a month ago? And I spoke to someone from the MDC about this, and I said, well, how can we reduce the cost? And he told me about, at the very end of his presentation, he did mention something that was, what I heard from this other person, is that originally, the plan was supposed to be a shorter period of time. Something like 25 years, but then they realized it would just be an enormous burden on the towns to pay for it. It was not realistic to expect the towns to pay so much, so they extended it to a 40-year plan. I'm not sure who did it, maybe through negotiations with the MDC and someone else. But, and I'm saying, well, why don't they just, you know, in 40 years, a lot of us won't even be around, or if we're around, we're going to be elderly, very old. won't even be around, or if we're around, we're going to be elderly, very old. And I said, well, why don't we just extend it a little bit longer, maybe six years so it's more affordable? You know, put some of it off on our kids, you know? And that's pretty much the only way, I think. It's sort of like a mortgage. You can't afford a 15-year mortgage, you get a 30-year mortgage. With this, maybe if you extend it even longer, because, you know, there's a lot of repairs that can go on for 40 years, that's a very long time. I think that's one option that they already did, that the representative mentioned that originally it was a shorter time period, and they extended it from 25 to, I think he said 2019, 2019, which is less than 25 years, but they extended it to 40 years. But I think that's one option that I think you should look into. Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. Anybody else who'd like to speak tonight?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. I'm not surprised at all these problems that we're hearing about tonight from the chief and others as to the crime. It's been going on for too long. And, you know, being just a normal citizen, I've considered, and I've thought about this so much, and it's like, it's the state Connecticut, state legislature lawmakers that have to put something in place. I know the chief has to stand behind them. This chief probably has to give them a lot of suggestions. But the fact is, it's our representatives that have failed us. They've failed us miserably. We just look at this issue tonight that they're talking about. They haven't done anything. The votes, what are they doing? Making juveniles an older age, or they want to do that? I think it should become younger, and I think there should be some penalties. From what the chief is saying, time and time again, they're caught and nothing really happens. It's about time the state legislature does something and set the rules because they have deleted or diluted the penalties all along, and this is where we are today. Just look at our physical mess at the state level, too. It's their fault that we're in all this trouble. We owe so much money. But anyway, I really believe that, you hear, here we have the opioid problem, we have drugs, more drugs coming along, more taxes, they want to, up at the state Capitol, pass more marijuana laws, they have more tax money rolling in. I don't know where it's going to end, folks, but I'll tell you this much, I don't think a decent person's going to stay in this state for too long. I think once they realize how bad it is, the best thing to do is leave. Tonight, we had a discussion with the, you had a discussion with, the MDC. I noticed on the, one of their, whatever you want to call it, they were talking, it mentioned some different things they were doing for holding back their budget. One thing was, that caught my eye, was they're going to terminate Medicare B premiums to their employees. We here in Weathersfield do that, too. And we spend a lot of money on Medicare B reimbursement payments. Maybe you should take a lead, or at least take a follow, to what the MDC is going to do and reduce that in your next budget negotiations, or your next negotiations on contracts. Also, no spousal or dependent Medicare dental coverage upon retirement. That's kind of tough. But, you know, if you don't have a job and you haven't worked, maybe you're not entitled to it. But then it makes me wonder about these people who don't have jobs and still get it. And then, of course, I think about my water bill. What I used to pay before they switched over to every month billings, I now pay as much once a month. How's it go? What I pay in one month, I used to pay in three months. And I think that's horrendous. And they increased their staff in order to do that. They had to. I don't know how else they could have made, put out monthly bills and took the money in without increasing staff to do that. But before, when they were doing it on a quarterly basis, they obviously had less people. But the MDC has no consideration whatsoever about cost. They just come in here and they give us a budget. Our representatives will definitely vote in favor of that budget because that's what they do. They're pitiful people, and they continue to jack up our rates. The MDC is nothing but a money pit, just like the town of Weathersfield. It just keeps throwing money in. I followed several of their projects, and what I saw was so disgusting and so wasteful, yet they've spent billions, and they're going to continue spending, and they're going to continue charging us back for all those wasteful dollars that they keep wasting. So I would hope that our representatives will someday vote no, like next week, on that budget, and get them to reduce their costs.
Mr. Young, your five minutes are up, so just wrap up, please.
All right. I wanted to go on to another subject, madam.
Well, you'll have to come back.
But anyway, I think we have to blame the state of Connecticut state legislature. It's not that they haven't done anything in the last number of years. They've controlled, the Democrats have controlled the state house.
Okay, thank you.
And they should have taken care of this. We shouldn't be looking at it today.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Mr. Colantonio, come on up.
Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Good evening. I have to say that it's sad that the juveniles are winning the battle right here instead of the police and the politicians. It's kind of sad. But I'm here again for my street, Morrison Avenue. And since the chief is here, I'm going to complain about it, and hopefully I get an answer. Because as the town manager knows, about three or four weeks ago, we did speak with her, and I did have a few questions, and I never got an answer, and rightly so, because the elections were coming, and I understood, since I take my time. But now it's almost three or four months. I didn't get an answer yet. We have a lot of questions that I got. But since the chief of police is here, I want to, I want to quote again, like, you know, the report from the police department that was dated May 21st, 2009. This is Morrison Avenue and Orchard. And that's what the report says. The stop sign for the westbound traffic on Morrison Avenue at Orchard Street is necessary because of a sideline restriction when on Orchard. I found that when driving south on Orchard Street, it is difficult to see westbound cars because of a fence at a six Orchard Street and the grade of the road on Morrison Avenue just west of Orchard Street. That's right. There is a side restriction there. And as measured by the town, the intersectional side distance in that particular case is 290 feet. After the reconstruction of the street, I guess, and the sidewalk, I questioned the intersectional side distance from Tifton Road, looking in a westbound direction. And you'll see that basically, you know, the town has took a measurement, and they came up with the intersectional side distance of 232 feet. I've asked many, many times, every time I come up here, and I said, all the time, can I get an answer now? Maybe. If you need a stop sign and you can only see 290 feet going uphill, you're coming from Tifton, you can only see 232 feet going downhill, it seems to me that it's more dangerous intersection, and we do need a stop sign, too. Now, let me, I've got a couple more minutes. I have the requirements or the recommendation of intersectional side distance at intersections. For 20 miles per hour, the speed limit, for the passenger car should be 225 feet. For the signs, the single unit trucks should be 280, 20 miles per hour. 25 miles per hour, the distance should be 280 feet. And for the single units or the buses that they go there on a daily basis is 350. So the posted speed on the street is 25. So just with the posted speed, the intersectional side distance on Tifton, it doesn't meet the requirement. What's going on? How long are we going to wait? There are over 40 feet, over 40 students on a daily basis that cross Morrison Avenue at the most dangerous spot, crossing to go to Silas D, the middle school, and yet, nobody does anything. What are we going to do? If something happens, personally, I'm going to hold you guys responsible. And nobody pays attention. Why? Why? It's been like, you know, nine years now. How long is it going to take? And the only answer I got, Mr. Chief, is basically, we have too many stop signs in the town of Weathersfield. Yes, I do agree with you, but we have too many stop signs where we do not need them, and we do not have stop signs where we need them. Thank you.
Thanks, Gus. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight?
Good evening. Cindy Zerblis, 119 Two-Rut Highway. Wow, let it go on the record that I actually agree with Bob Young tonight. But seriously, I do. I just, first of all, I want to thank the chief and the rest of the Weathersfield PD for watching out for our kids. It's been, it was kind of scary last week to hear those things. You know, that happened to one of, and I will, I'll call it one of our babies, because that's what it is. It's one of our babies that got attacked. But I really want to say to the council that we really need to join together, Republican, Democrat, whatever you are, and we need to go to the Capitol, and we need to tell them the youth offender law needs to be changed. Not only that, there's laws on the books that have been changed back in 2011. The drug laws were changed, and they, they're basically nothing now. I mean, and that's part of the problem. I think the chief had said that, too. That's an issue. These kids, they don't care anymore. They have no fear. My brother was a corrections officer. He said the worst place to be assigned when you're a corrections officer is in the juvenile system. Because these kids, they have no, I don't know if it's because their brains haven't developed yet, that they don't know that this is for real when they do something, but it's not a joke. And our officers are out there, they're, you know, as the chief said, they're getting in pursuits with some of these kids. They're going 100 miles away. And you know what? There sits Officer Nap in a chair. Not only is he my friend, but he's somebody's husband, he's somebody's father. He could get killed one night chasing one of these kids. Is that what it's going to take for us to change these laws? It's got to change, you guys. We cannot continue to live like this anymore. This is not, as Mike Barassa said, this is not the Weathersfield I grew up in. We didn't have these crimes going on like this. I mean, I don't feel safe in my, walking out in the morning anymore out of my house. I mean, what, and I live over, you know, on the rocky hillside. I can't even imagine if I was living towards the Hartford line. I would be probably terrified because I have been, I guess I could say I was a victim of a home invasion before, so I know how it feels to go through something like that. And my heart goes out to that little boy that got attacked. Because, you know what? He might be fine now, but a couple of years from now, something might snap with him, and he's not going to be right. It's a very scary thing when you're involved in something like that. So I'm begging all of you. In the past, I've had conversations with Senator Doyle about the judicial system. That's another thing that's hugely broken. I spend the majority of my time at work looking at criminal records. And I'm going to tell you guys right now, when you look at criminal records, and chief and probably Officer Nap, they could, they'll agree with me, when someone's arrested for something, a lot of times when they go to court, that charge gets substituted, which means somebody that was arrested for a felony, it ends up being, looking like a misdemeanor when really it was a felony that they committed. But these prosecutors, you know, they're not, they're not charging these people with what they should really be charged with. And I see it every day. That's all I do all day long is look at criminal records. And I'm telling you, these people go to court and they get away with murder. So that's what's happening with these kids. They're getting away with murder, and that's what's going to end up happening here. Last night, that gentleman, like the chief said, was lucky. It's going to happen if we don't act on it now. So I'm, I know Matt made the suggestion, you know, what about a task force, whatever? We need to start it. And I'm volunteering as a parent in this town and as a resident, if you guys need somebody that, you know, will help spearhead something like this, I'll be more than happy to. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Anybody else? Okay, well, we don't have too much left on the agenda. We have no hearings on ordinances and resolutions, and we'll move on to reports from boards and commissions. Do any council members have reports? Nothing.
That's annoying.
We're going to go right back into public comment?
Sure.
Okay. No comments from council members. Very well, we have...
Oh, comments, too?
Well, our agenda actually doesn't have a space for comments. It has a space for reports. Would you like to give a comment?
Sure.
Counselor Hurley, the right hand.
I would just like to agree with the speakers and the police chief that we do need to change that law and the laws that are affecting everybody in Weathersfield. And I think the whole council should stick together and do that.
Thank you. Any other comments or reports to make tonight? Okay, so we're going to move back into public comment. Members of the public have five minutes to speak on any issue. Please state your name and address. Mr. Mazzarella, come on up.
Good evening. Tom Mazzarella, 600 Walcott Hill Road. I read an interesting article in the Hartford Current Thursday, November 15th, titled "Freedom of Information Commission Admonishes Municipalities for Violating Connecticut Meeting Laws." Had to do with the city of Bridgeport. Basically, to sum it up, they're discussing the rules regarding executive session. And the article ends with, "In the Bridgeport case, the commission noted that it has repeatedly stated that agencies seeking to go behind closed doors must give some indication of the specific topic to be addressed. Generic terms such as personnel or legal aren't enough," the commission ruled. So tonight, I see you're going into executive session, and the reason stated is negotiations. And I think the public should be given some indication of what the negotiations are about. If it's a personnel matter, you obviously don't have to state the person that the discussion's going to be about. But I think the public should know, in trying to be more transparent, that if you're negotiating tonight with, say, for example, our new town manager, or if you're negotiating about a union contract, that the public should be advised of what's going on. And that way there, we wouldn't have surprises where suddenly we find out we're going to be buying a farm. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight?
It's me again. Good evening. Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. I did attend a meeting, when was it, last week? This is regarding the pedestrian and bikeway paths, you know, in Weathersfield. I found it very interesting. I enjoyed it. And there were a lot of questions, too, you know, and there were a lot of gaps on sidewalks, on streets that should not be. on streets, there should not be. But the thing that struck me the most, or it impressed me, I guess, there was a questionnaire, and one of the questionnaire asked the question, why do you walk, or why don't you walk, and whatnot, or do you bike, why don't you bike? And, and, and one of the question, or the answer was, a lot of them says, because it's not safe, the cars go too fast, the speed is too high. That's, that's sad. I, I, I think it's really bad. Now, the Chief of Police is no longer here, but I'm going to make a comment that, every time we break the law, and there are no consequences, we're going to break the law again, and every time we break the law, it's going to be more and more and more. People go too fast on my street. Posted speed 25, 85th percentile, years ago, 31, right now, it must be 35, 40. I guess, you know, two councilmen came on my street, and they, and they, you know, they, they were there, and they agreed, says, yeah, people go too fast. But it's not just on my street, it's, it's all over Creighton, okay? It's, it's, it's all over, and, and we should do something. They say, because the Police Department, as well as they do their job and whatnot, they don't do a complete job? I mean, if you break the law, I mean, nobody stops you. There are so many people, you know, driving around, talking on the phone, it's against the law. Why do I see it and the Police Department doesn't see it? I mean, this is, to me, it's incomprehensible, but, I mean, I'm, after all, I'm just a foreigner, that's why I don't, I'm not supposed to understand everything, I guess, you know? But, but it's just, it's just bad. And so, the meeting that I went, I was, you know, I found it interesting, I enjoyed it, and, and they complained about sidewalk gaps. And I said, yeah, I complained, too, about the sidewalk gaps. I didn't want the sidewalk in front of my house, I said, but I got it anyway. And on George Street, there are gaps. Who's supposed to clean the sidewalks? What's going on? And then somebody asked a question regarding whose responsibility is it, like, you know, for the sidewalk, and there was no answer. But anyway, I found it interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colantonio. Anybody else like to speak tonight?
Logan, Dave Krug, 149 Broad Street. I didn't, I missed the part where the police was speaking, but I was at a meeting in Hartford where they discussed the pilot program to have cameras put voluntarily on homes and businesses who, and, who would volunteer to have the Police Department put pair, cameras that they supply, all they would have to do is tap into the Wi-Fi of the residents, and it would cost the resident nothing to, and it was a very ti, small camera, not like the old days where they had the big cameras. And, and they, they're putting this all over Hartford in high crime areas, or just to monitor areas, and the resident would have access to review, you know, past hours, and the Police Department would have access to the, to the website where that, they can check the hours, and the, the, the footage. But if, that's one idea, I thought, well, Weathersfield doesn't have high crime, but maybe if we got a few of those in some areas that we're a little bit more concerned about, we may not be able to stop the crime as it's happening, but we would have actual footage of, of a car or individual to, to track them down. Now, Hartford, I guess, they, they got this program, they got money from a grant or something to get this program, but I know homes are already doing it now, there's, all over Connecticut, there's people putting cameras in front of their doorways, or in their homes, and inside their house, but this one program in Hartford, it's, it's run by the Police Department, maybe we can get something like that, maybe that might help. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Good evening again, Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. Back to the MDC. One thing that they spoke about, or put up on the screen, was cost per town, I guess it's by, by resident, where it showed $98 for people buying or paying for sewer service in Hartford, whereas in our, in Weathersfield, it was $300. You want to go back and look at that? And of course, he was blaming the ad valorem on that, because Hartford's assessed at like 32%, and we're, we're assessed at 70%, just like all the other towns. And, and I really believe that there should be some kind of equity involved in this issue, taking, taking away that 32, 32% and putting a 70 on them, and make them pay for it. I mean, why should our, why should their flushing a toilet be less than ours? Just doesn't make any sense. At the last town council meeting, I spoke, I spoke about the Keisha Farm, and I was talking about different, different properties that were, were either sold, or currently on the market. And, of course, there were five of them that sold, that I spoke about. Two of them were, and, and I came up with an average of like $30,500 per acre, out of those five. Of course, those five were 2018, there were two of them, and that average was $19,500. And these were very recent sales, two, sales in 2018. The average price, and one was in Glastonbury, our next-door neighbor, and the other one was in Windsor. $19,500, and we're paying what? $75,000 per acre for the Keisha Farm. Then, on the other hand, there was a number of far, of properties that were sold, that were on the market, not sold. Bullland had four of them. And I'll just read them off quickly, without the street names, I mean, if you want them, I'll give them to you later. 11 acres, at average $50,000 an acre. 28 acres, averaged $13,800 an acre. 19 acres, averaged $32,000 an acre. 28 acres, averaged $13,900 an acre. Middletown had a whole bunch of them. And Middletown had them, 31 acres, for $17,000 an acre. 16 acres, at $27,000 an acre. 83 acres, sold for $6,200 an acre, and we're paying $75,000. I know it's in Middletown, but it's only a couple, couple towns down the street. 13,000, uh, 13 acres, sold for $13,000 an acre. And it just goes on, ladies and gentlemen. The town of Cheshire has one for sale, 50 acres of land at $976,000. That comes out to $19,520 bucks an acre. Why in the world are we paying $75,000 an acre for some, some piece of property that hasn't been worked for years? And it looks like heck. Go look at these properties online. A lot of them look great, nice green, it's being active, it's an active property. What else I noticed is, the town of, whew, Reading. Reading, Ritzy area, where a lot of movie stars and wealthy people live. Here you got 20 acres of land for sale for $720,000. That's $35,000 an acre, folks. Here's another one, in Reading, another 26 acres, for $625,000 an acre. That's $23,000 an acre. The real kicker is this, the town of Stamford, Connecticut. We all know that town, right? I've never, I've been there, but I've passed by it many times, down on the Gold Coast. They have a parcel of 15 acres for $1.2 million. That's a lot of money, $1.2 million for 15 acres. You're buying 32, and this is for sale, it hasn't been sold, and it says, for a nice building lot. They called it a nice building lot, which means it's in a nice neighborhood of probably mansions, okay? And what they've said, and if you took the $1,200,000 twice, you're at your price at the Wilkes, at the, at the Keisha Farm.
Okay, thank you, your five minutes are up.
What you're doing is, you're paying Stamford, Connecticut prices for the Keisha Farm. That's what it boils down to, and you're up in central Connecticut, right next door to the worst pit in the world, which is called Hartford.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
There are more of these, madam, and I'll be back, because of your five-minute nonsense, ridiculous time span that you only give a citizen to talk. I will be back, and I'm going to recite many more of these, because you're paying Ritzy Town price for that property.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Young. Do we have a motion to go into executive session to discuss negotiations?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, have a good night.
I wasn't.
[laughing]